...of people with disability is now in session.
Good morning, everybody. We begin, as we do with all our hearings, with an acknowledgement of country. I wish to acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Iora nation, the traditional custodians of this land. I also acknowledge the Turrbal and Yagira nations upon whose lands our hearing room in Brisbane is located. I pay my respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as well as to all First Nations people viewing this public hearing on the live stream. This is the sixth public hearing of the Royal Commission. It is the fifth hearing in which evidence is presented on a topic within the Royal Commission's terms of reference. The hearing this week will examine the ways in which people with intellectual disabilities are treated when they display or are thought likely to display so-called behaviours of concern. The responses often involve the administration of psychotropic medication. This hearing will examine whether responses of this kind, as distinct from positive behavioural support, cause or increase the risk of people with intellectual disability experiencing violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation. As I noted at the commencement of Public Hearing Five, which dealt with the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on people with disability, ordinarily, any member of the community is free to attend and observe a public hearing of a Royal Commission, including this Royal Commission. But as we know only too well, these are not ordinary times. We are still conducting a public hearing, but this week it will be a virtual hearing. For reasons of safety, during the COVID-19 pandemic, no member of the public can be present in the hearing room. But the proceedings will, of course, be livestreamed, so anyone interested can follow the proceedings by going to the Royal Commission's website. I therefore extend a warm welcome on behalf of the Royal Commission to everyone who is following or will follow these proceedings on the livestream, or indeed in some other way. I want to make now a reference to Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. I want to pay tribute to her and to honour her memory. She, as you know, died last week. It may seem strange to mourn in Australia the death of a justice of the Supreme Court of the United States, but her commitment to equality transcended national borders. She is, of course, best known as a champion of women's rights, and she has been and was mightily influential in advancing the cause of women's equality far beyond the borders of the United States. What is less well-known is that Justice Ginsburg was a champion of the rights of people with disability. A disability rights organisation in the United States said on her death that no other Supreme Court justice has played a larger role in the disability rights movement. Her opinion in the foundational case of Olmstead &amp; LC in 1999, which greatly expanded the scope of the Americans with Disability Act, has been described as legendary. It's also been said to be the equivalent, in the area of disability rights, to Brown and the Board of Education, the famous school desegregation case in 1954 in the field of civil rights. Justice Ginsburg's life is perhaps best described in a portion of the Hebrew Bible, known as Shavatim, or Judges. "Sedik, sedik, tefdoff. Justice, justice, you shall pursue." This describes, in three Hebrew words and five English words, what this Royal Commission is attempting to do. I'd now like to explain how this virtual hearing will be conducted. We have a hearing room in Sydney, which is a courtroom within premises that are occupied by the Fair Work Commission. We are using this room with the kind permission of that commission. As it happens, there are two Royal Commissions holding hearings at the Fair Work premises today, the other being a hearing of the aged care Royal Commission. Three commissioners are participating in this hearing today. Commissioner Alastair McEwan AM is with me in Sydney, but he is keeping at a safe distance. Commissioner Rosalind Atkinson AO is participating by video link through the Royal Commission's hearing room in Brisbane. Ms Kate Eastman SC is the senior counsel assisting the Royal Commission of this hearing, and she is present at the Sydney hearing room. Ms Eastman is appearing with two counsel assisting the Royal Commission, Dr Hayley Bennett and Ms Melinda Zerner. Dr Bennett is in the Sydney hearing room, while Ms Zerner is in the Brisbane hearing room, together with Commissioner Atkinson. Some members of the Commission's staff are in the Sydney hearing room or nearby. Some are in the Brisbane hearing room. As with our recent hearing on the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic on people with disability, this remote hearing has involved meticulous preparation in setting up the information technology and the video link systems. We have been told that there is every reason to be confident that all will proceed smoothly, but please bear with us if we have the occasional glitch. We're going to hear from 26 witnesses over the course of four hearing days. Most witnesses will give evidence remotely, but some will do so from one or other of the hearing rooms, and indeed, one will do so today from the Sydney hearing room. The evidence of some witnesses will be pre-recorded. The evidence will include witnesses who can speak of the experiences of people with intellectual disability and autism, to whom psychotropic drugs have been administered, sometimes over very long periods, in order to control what is usually described as challenging behaviour or behaviours of concern. I'll come back to those terms in just a minute. We shall hear from medical practitioners, including psychiatrists and general practitioners, about the benefits and risks of administering psychotropic drugs to people with intellectual disability and autism. We shall also hear from other health professionals, from advocates and academic experts, including researchers in the field of disability studies. In addition, evidence will be given by representatives of Commonwealth and state agencies, such as the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission, the Queensland Public Guardian and the Queensland Department of Communities, Disability Services and Seniors. The witnesses in the course of the hearing will use expressions that may not be familiar to everyone, but have particular meanings in this area. They include expressions such as restrictive practices, chemical restraints and off-label prescribing. Ms Eastman will explain some of these terms in her opening, and others will become clearer as the witnesses give their evidence. Without intruding too much on Ms Eastman's opening, I think it's important at the outset to explain what is meant by challenging behaviour or behaviours of concern. I appreciate that there is considerable sensitivity about the use of language and that some people interpret these terms as implying that people with intellectual disability are responsible for their own behaviour. However, these terms are consistently used by experts in a rather different sense, including experts in disability studies who are very familiar with nuances in language. For example, Professor Leanne Dalce, who is the professor of disability studies and chair in Intellectual Disability and Behaviour Support at the University of New South Wales, adopts the definition of behaviours of concern that is advanced in the literature. The expression refers to, and I quote, "behaviour of such an intensity, frequency or duration as to threaten the life or the physical safety of the individual or others, and is likely to lead to responses that are restrictive, pervasive or result in exclusion." Behaviours of concern can include, or at least can be said to include, verbal, physical or sexual aggression, self-injury and destruction of property. As the evidence during this week will make clear, challenging behaviour can have severe consequences, both to the person exhibiting that behaviour and to those who are providing care, treatment or support. Professor Dalce explains that complex support needs arise in the interaction between the individual and their potential or actual support systems. In other words, the needs reflect the relationships between the individual, their service providers and agencies, and the context which shapes those relationships. This highlights, in her words, "behaviours of concern are not simply an individual pathology, but rather exist in the complex interplay of biomedical function, social and environmental factors which also shape the interventions made in response to those behaviours of concern." The term psychotropic drugs, of which you will hear a great deal, refers to any drug capable of affecting the mind, behaviour or emotions of the person to whom the drug is administered. This hearing is concerned with psychotropic drugs that can be administered legally, although, of course, such drugs are subject to stringent controls under Commonwealth state and territory laws. The three main classes of psychotropic drugs are antidepressants, anxiolytic hypnotics such as benzodiazepines like Valium and Xanax, which are used to control anxiety, and antipsychotic or anticonvulsive drugs. Ms Eastman will address in more detail the evidence that will be given this week. I just want to make a few general observations. On the basis of the statements that will be tendered in evidence, there seemed to be widespread agreement on a number of matters. First, psychotropic medications have an important part to play in treating mental illness, and if properly administered, can improve health outcomes for patients with those illnesses. Secondly, psychotropic drugs, particularly antipsychotics, can detrimentally affect a person's health and wellbeing if administered inappropriately. Sometimes the consequences can be very serious indeed. The evidence will provide examples of adverse consequences that can even, in some cases, include death. According to Dr Catherine Franklin, a consultant psychiatrist and research fellow with the Queensland Centre for Intellectual and Developmental Disability, about 80% of people taking antipsychotic medication experience side effects, and one-third of these have moderate to severe impairment due to medication-related side effects. Thirdly, there is a clear distinction between using psychotropic drugs appropriately to treat mental illness and administering them to control the behaviour of people with intellectual disability or autism who do not necessarily have a mental illness. In practice, as we shall hear, the distinction is blurred, and psychotropic drugs are often used to control challenging behaviour of people with intellectual disability, and not truly for the purpose of treating mental illness, although the medical records can sometimes suggest otherwise. Fourthly, psychotropic drugs are overused in Australia as a response to behaviours of concern by people with intellectual disability. For the most part, this form of behavioural control is administered without the person having a meaningful say in what is to happen. Fifthly, there is data available that may suggest that psychotropic drugs are overused. For example, Mr Graham Head, the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commissioner, tells us that there were 177,000 reports of unauthorised use of chemical restraints on NDIS participants in 2019, 2020. An unauthorised use of psychotropic medication is not necessarily improper, for example, where drugs have to be administered without prior approval in an emergency. Nonetheless, the figures are suggestive and perhaps receive support from other data. But as we shall hear, there are no reliable national statistics on the extent to which psychotropic drugs are used to control the behaviour of people with intellectual disability, the majority of whom are not NDIS participants. Sixthly, official bodies have formulated key principles designed to limit the use of psychotropic drugs. The overriding and generally accepted principle is that psychotropic medication and other restrictive practices should only be administered as a last resort to prevent imminent and serious harm to the person or to others, and only where less restrictive options have been exhausted. Even then, the least restrictive option should be used. The difficulty that witnesses will point to is the absence of enforceable national standards regulating the administration of psychotropic drugs to people with intellectual disability and autism as a form of chemical restraint, although there have been some initiatives undertaken to formulate national standards. Seventhly, positive behavioural support is an effective tool for responding to behaviours of concern and should be more widely used as a means of reducing reliance on chemical restraints, provided, and this is an important proviso, that this support is of requisite quality. Eighthly, the overuse or misuse of psychotropic drugs as a form of behavioural control raises significant issues concerning Australia's compliance with the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, the CRPD. The provisions that are relevant include these. Article 12 provides that state parties, such as Australia, shall recognise that people with disability enjoy legal capacity on an equal basis with others in all aspects of life. Article 14 requires states' parties to ensure that people with disability enjoy the right to liberty and security of the person on an equal basis with others and are not deprived of their liberty arbitrarily. Article 15, which reflects the terms of other international conventions, says that no one shall be subjected to cruel, inhuman or degrading treatment. And of course, Article 16, of which we have heard before, states that state parties must take appropriate measures to protect people with disability from all forms of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation. The issues we are examining this week therefore have a significant human rights dimension. I'd like to make two final comments. First, as has frequently been pointed out at our hearings, our terms of reference require us to inquire into an extraordinarily wide range of issues, many of which raise policy questions of great difficulty and complexity. Sometimes, the answers to the policy questions seem to be relatively straightforward, at least in principle, but the difficulty and the complexity lie in translating those principles into everyday practice. It is the practical implementation of good ideas that can be the key to reducing, if not completely eliminating, particular forms of abuse directed at people with disability. This may be one self-hearing. Lastly, the Royal Commission is committed to providing a forum for people with disability to recount their experiences and express their views. However, some people with disability, despite the best efforts of advocates, are unable, but perhaps unwilling, to make their voices heard in a public hearing. Even so, it is essential for the Royal Commission to understand their experiences. As Ms Eastman will explain, in some respects, this hearing is concerned with the experiences of hidden or voiceless people with disability. One way or another, their stories must be told.
Commissioners, thank you. I appear with Dr Hayley Bennett and Melinda Zerner, who's in Brisbane. We're instructed by the Office of the Solicitor assisting the Royal Commission. We also acknowledge and pay our respects to the traditional custodians on the land from which we all participate in this public hearing. We pay our respects to First Nations elders, past, present and emerging, as well as all First Nations people following this public hearing. On the 16th of September last year, just over a year ago, Commissioners, you convened a ceremonial sitting to open this Royal Commission. On that occasion, Commissioner McEwan, you said this. "For far too long, people with disability in Australia have been denied the right to make their own decisions with appropriate support. For far too long, people with disability have been denied the dignity of risk and the freedom to choose how to live their own lives with independence. Our society cannot be allowed to protect people with disability to the extent they cannot choose to live their own lives as they wish and to experience the consequences of those choices. We must avoid protectionism to the point of not allowing people with disability to take risks as any person would expect to do in our society. When people with disability are subjected to restricted practices in the form of chemical restraint to manage a person's behaviour, which is done in the name of safety or to protect themselves and others, it will impair a person's independence and may significantly impair their human rights. There is no single or consistent definition of the expression "restrictive practices" or "chemical restraint" in Australia. The absence of consistent definitions of expressions, restrictive practices and chemical restraints means there's no consistent approach to when and how decisions may be made to address a person's behaviour and whether that will result in a restraint, whether consent is required, perceptions of risk and whether a restraint is justified. For the purpose of this hearing, a restrictive practice is any practice or intervention that has the effect of restricting the rights or freedom of movement of a person with disability. This is the definition used in the National Disability Insurance Scheme Act. For the purpose of this hearing, we will use the definition "chemical restraint" as used by the National Disability Insurance Scheme Restrictive Practices and Behaviour Support Rules. And that definition says as follows. "The use of medication or chemical substance for the primary purpose of influencing a person's behaviour." It does not include the use of medication prescribed by a medical practitioner for the treatment of or to enable treatment of a diagnosed mental disorder, a physical illness or physical condition. Psychotropic medications are the most common type of medication used to, quote, "influence a person's behaviour." This definition of chemical restraint makes a distinction between therapeutic and non-therapeutic use of the drugs. And during this hearing, you will hear that appropriate therapeutic use of psychotropic medication can enhance the wellbeing and health of a person with a cognitive disability who experiences a mental illness. Now, Commissioners, you may recall that the term cognitive disability is often used as an umbrella term and includes people with intellectual disability and people with autism. During this hearing, you may hear witnesses use these expressions interchangeably. So coming back to the distinction between medication used to restrain a person and medication used to treat an illness or disorder, it's not always clear. Research has suggested that up to 60% of people with intellectual disability are prescribed psychotropic medication to managing challenging behaviours, and that of this population, only 30% have a mental illness. So this is a significant number of people when you recall that 1.8% of the Australian population has an intellectual disability. The use of psychotropic medication as a chemical restraint raises many concerns, as you will hear this week. And some of the particular concerns are: overreliance on such restraints as a first response to challenging behaviour; the misuse or overdosing of medication for the purpose of behavioural control; and the side effects of psychotropic medication. Similar concerns have been considered by the aged care Royal Commission in relation to the chemical restraint of older people in residential aged care facilities, and this Commission will take note of the work of the other Royal Commission. Later today, you'll hear evidence from Dr Manya Angeli. She's a pharmacist. And she will tell you she was asked to review the medication of a person who I will call Alex. Alex has autism, intellectual disability and a bipolar disorder. Dr Angeli was told Alex had, quote, "extreme and challenging behaviours." Alex had been on some form of antipsychotic medication since the age of four. Dr Angeli reviewed Alex's medication. Her review revealed Alex was prescribed three antipsychotic medications, of which two were not indicated for autism. Alex was prescribed the medication in doses considerably higher than the recommended doses for the treatment of schizophrenia, which Alex did not have. Dr Angeli will tell you, two of the antipsychotic medications were used as a chemical restraint, and they were not working. She expressed concerns, following her review, about the immediate side effects and the risk to Alex's long-term health. She will tell you that this is one of the most extreme cases she has seen of the misuse of psychotropic medication. So what do we know about the experiences of people with intellectual disability and autism with psychotropic medication? That's a question we'll explore during the course of this week. Dr Catherine Franklin will tell you there has been international concern about over-prescription of psychotropic medication for at least 30 years. Professor Julian Troller and Dr Franklin's research has found that the rates of mental illness among people with intellectual disability are two and a half times higher than the general population. However, mental illness is often undetected for people with intellectual disability. So their research reveals that even accounting for elevated presence of mental illness in populations with intellectual disability, psychotropic prescription rates and polypharmacy appeared disproportionately high and not in keeping with evidence-based prescribing practices. Professor Leanne Dalce will tell you that, quote, "disentangling the use of psychotropic medication for a confirmed mental health diagnosis and its use for the purpose of managing behaviours of concern is a significant challenge." She will tell you that there is limited and inconsistent evidence regarding the effectiveness of psychotropic medication in reducing behaviours of concern. Dr Jane Law will tell you there is no strong evidence base for the use of many psychotropic medications that she sees administered to people with intellectual disability, apart, of course, from those prescribed to patients with a history of diagnosed psychiatric disorders. Commissioners, you may well ask, why are psychotropic medications used as a chemical restraint if there's no definitive evidence that this medication is effective? Commissioner Sackville, you've touched this morning on the contentious expressions "behaviour of concern" and "challenging behaviour." This is not new. You heard this in the evidence at Public Hearing Three last year on the experience of living in a group home for people with disability. These expressions are problematic. Dr Nikki Edwards will tell you that estimates of the prevalence of challenging behaviours will vary upon methodology and population samples. And indeed, at Public Hearing Three, Dr Vaisal told you this. "Challenging behaviours are expressions of frustration when people's needs are not being met. Their choices and control are undermined, and they have no other way of communicating their frustration." Professor Troller told you at Public Hearing Four in February this year, the inquiry into healthcare and services for people with cognitive disability, about some of the challenges with communication differences and adapted functioning for people with intellectual disability. And you'll recall he made these observations. "First, people with intellectual disability commonly experience impairments to both expressive and receptive communication abilities, and they may experience difficulty understanding abstract ideas and may require support to express and/or receive information." He told you that up to 80% of people with severe intellectual disability do not develop effective speech, and 50% of autistic people with disability experience profound communication impairments impacting on understanding or being understood by others. Professor Troller has told you that some people with intellectual disability or autism may struggle to identify or communicate their internal experiences of mental distress or physical discomfort to clinicians. And he said diagnostic overshadowing therefore occurs more frequently in such cases. And he said diagnostic overshadowing therefore occurs more frequently in such populations, especially in the absence of effective communication strategies. Dr Franklin will tell you this morning that for many people with intellectual or developmental disability, challenging behaviours may be their only form of communication. It may be a way of communicating physical illness, mental illness or a variety of environmental or psychological issues. Such things as common pain, unhappiness, sensory disabilities, difficulties or abuse. So understanding how behaviour is a form of communication will be examined at this public hearing. And communication is critical to choice. And all treatment by health services must be based on the principle of free and informed consent, namely choice. You will hear concerns about people with intellectual disability not being able to consent to psychotropic medications regardless of whether the medications are administered for therapeutic purposes or as a chemical restraint. And Dr Jane Law will tell you that most often the negative effects of behavioural concerns are minor and can be managed adequately by suitable behavioural environmental management. Commissioner Sackville, can I come back to invisible and silent people? At the ceremonial sitting of this royal commission in September last year, you said this. We also recognise that there will be many people who are unable or very reluctant to come forward to tell us of their experiences. This is likely to be true of people with disability who have difficulties in communicating, live in closed communities or experience homelessness. This public hearing is such a case. Controlling a person's behaviour by using psychotropic medication may impair or silence a person's only means of communication. They become invisible. As Dr Edwards would tell you, they are voiceless and without agency. And you'll hear later today from ABF, who will tell you about her brother's experience. And she will tell you that she would like all professionals and every member of the community to be better educated about invisible disabilities. She fears without this, they will just simply be shut away. People who have been subjected to chemical restraints are not always able or willing to speak about their experiences. And this has had consequences for this public hearing. And the absence of people with disability who have experienced chemical restraints speaking for themselves in this forum will be apparent. In preparing for this hearing, we have consulted with people with intellectual disabilities, their families, advocates and experts about how evidence from people with disability experiencing chemical restraint may or should be presented. Some people have told us they would prefer to share their experiences in private sessions with the commissioners or by making a personal submission or a submission in response to the Royal Commission's issues paper, rather than speaking in a forum like this. That choice must be respected. The Royal Commission encourages anyone who wishes to share their experiences or bring concerns to its attention to do so. And they will be supported to do so in the manner that they wish. So you will hear from mothers, sisters, advocates about the experience of people with intellectual disability and autism and their challenges with communication, the responses to their behaviours of concern and when psychotropic medication has been used to both treat and restrain them. So I want to touch briefly on some of the issues that will arise during the course of this hearing. First is human rights. Chemical restraints impair a person's human rights, a person's freedom of movement, liberty, privacy and the right not to be subjected to cruel, inhuman or degrading treatment, as well as the right to the enjoyment of the highest attainable standard of health without discrimination. These are rights recognised in the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. And Commissioner Sackville, you've referred to these rights earlier. The committee that monitors the CRPD has said that decisions about medical and psychiatric treatment must be based on a determination of a person's autonomy, will and preferences. The CRPD has had something to say about Australia. In 2013, the committee expressed its concern that under Australian law, a person can be subjected to medical intervention against his or her will if the person is deemed to be incapable of making or communicating a decision about treatment. It recommended that Australia take immediate steps to end such practices, including establishing a national monitoring mechanism. Six years later, in December last year, the committee again expressed concern in relation to Australia's compliance, saying legislation, policies and practice that allow for psychotropic medication, physical restraint and seclusion under the guise of quote behaviour modification or restrictive practices against persons with disability, including children in any setting such as justice, education, health, psychosocial and aged care facilities. It recommended that Australia establish a nationally consistent legislative and administrative framework for the protection of all persons with disability in relation to, among other things, the use of psychotropic medication. Commissioners, there are also statements from other UN Human Rights Treaty bodies and several of the special rapporteurs with mandates to examine torture, health and the rights of people with disabilities. And these will be matters the Royal Commission will consider in more detail in relation to the issues papers, issue paper on restrictive practices. Secondly, there's an absence of nationally consistent laws and regulations of the use of psychotropic medication for people with intellectual disability or autism. As you've heard from Commissioner Sackville, there's no national single law or set of guidelines dealing with the use of chemical restraints in Australia. And this was highlighted by the UN Committee. There's no national law or regulation that provides oversight for the use of psychotropic medication for therapeutic purposes or as a restrictive practice. In 2014, the Department of Social Security developed a national framework for reducing and eliminating the use of restrictive practices in the disability service sector. However, Professor Douse will tell you that the framework has limitations in terms of its focus on how and when the use of restrictive practices occur rather than the guidelines focusing first on the prevention of restrictive practices and early intervention for behaviours of concern. The National Disability Insurance Scheme Act regulates the use of restrictive practices on NDIS participants. And the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commissioner's functions include the behaviour support function. And you'll hear from Dr Geoffrey Chan later this week, the senior practitioner for the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission about this function. Part of this function involves assisting Australian states and territory develop a regulatory framework, including nationally consistent minimum standards in relation to restrictive practices in line with the national framework. Registered NDIS providers and behavioural support practitioners must comply with the requirements in the Quality and Safeguards Commission and the rules. The rules state that a restrictive practice is a regulated restrictive practice and it may include a chemical restraint. The rules then impose requirements on NDIS providers who use restrictive practices. And this requires that such practices should not occur where a relevant state or territory law prohibits such use. It should be undertaken in accordance with state and territory authorisation processes and the use of a behaviour support plan and be recorded by the provider and reported to the commissioner. This hearing will examine the complex interaction between the Commonwealth State and Territory Regulations. And Mr Head, the NDIS Commissioner, will tell you about recent steps taken to try to reach agreement on principles for nationally consistent authorisation of restrictive practices. One focus on this part of, on this hearing is on Queensland. The Queensland laws have been in place for some time following an inquiry conducted by the late Honourable William Carter QC in 2006. With respect to Queensland, you'll hear about the way in which Queensland law regulates restrictive practices under the Disability Services Act and the Guardianship and Administration Act. A number of witnesses will tell you about the experience in Queensland, including Professor Karen Nankervis, who was the Chair and Director of the Centre of Excellence for Behaviour Support that was established in 2008 in response to recommendations made by Mr Carter. Ms Shayna Smith, the Acting Public Guardian in Queensland, will explain the role of the public guardian, the OPG. She will tell you that the OPG's experience is that the implementation of the legislative framework across three Queensland organisations that have power to consider requests for chemical restraints and when they may be used does, and I quote, "at times lead to some operational challenges for both the OPG and the service provider sector." She will tell you about common challenges, including that the primary purpose of psychotropic medication is not always clear. And it has been prescribed by treating doctors to manage anger or behaviour due to intellectual disability, clearly not appropriate prescribing practices. And she will tell you about the lack of accurate data reporting in relation to frequency, intensity and duration of behaviours of harm. And she will tell you that the views and wishes of adults who are subject to restrictive practices are not always sought. Her focus on adults is because the Queensland laws do not apply to children. Ms Lockyer, Ms Donna Lockyer, the Executive Director, Restrictive Practices and Specialist Disability Programs in the Queensland Department of Communities, Disability Services and Seniors will tell you about the regulations in Queensland requiring the approval for the use of chemical restraints. And other witnesses will tell you about their experiences in using the Queensland laws and how they now operate in the context of the NDIS Act. This will include people who are not NDIS participants. Thirdly, you'll hear evidence about behaviour support plans and the regulation of behaviour support specialists. Professor Douse will give evidence about recognised best practice in Australia for responding to behaviours of concern in the form of positive behaviour support. Ms Joyce Lynn Smith will tell you that positive behaviour support and capacity skills building is an effective alternative to restrictive practices, including chemical restraint. It enhances the quality of life. And she will explain the way behaviour support plans should be developed from a person-centred approach. You'll also hear evidence from Mr Simon Wardell about the importance of frontline support staff implementing positive behaviour plans and examples of where this has not occurred. And you'll hear about the importance of positive behaviour support practitioners being appropriately trained and qualified. You'll hear from Ms Courtney Wolf, who will tell you about the difficulties people face in trying to access behaviour support practitioners, including the substantial costs involved in the preparation of plans. And you'll also hear from a number of witnesses about their experience of positive behaviour plans. Rose Atherton will tell you about having no knowledge of a behaviour support plan being in place for her late brother. And when she discovered the plan and reviewed the plan with the assistance of a behaviour support specialist, she will tell you this. It made her blood boil. She discovered the plan had been prepared by a staff member who had never been trained. You will hear that adequate training for support workers has been lacking. Often, the mix of residents is a major issue in the layout of group homes. And it can lead to staff fatigue, increased use of casual staff and difficulties with the implementation of behavioural support programs. You will hear about behaviour support plans not being followed and remaining quote on the shelf. One concern is the lack of consistency in behaviour support, partly due to the highly casualised workforce. And you'll hear poor monitor, about poor monitoring of the day-to-day administration of psychotropic medications in this context. That there are no standards and little evidence-based practice guidance to ensure consistent and comprehensive monitoring and accountability mechanisms that will assist in the day-to-day practices. Next, you'll hear a little bit about the support of supporting people with intellectual disability to manage conflicts, particularly life in a group home. And later today, you will hear from Raylene Griffiths, who has a disability. And she will tell you about her experiences living in group homes when disagreements arose with fellow residents and how she went to work out those problems. Her evidence will highlight the importance of providing people with disability with the skills and confidence to respond to and resolve problems that may arise when another person's behaviour causes concern. Next, you'll hear about the importance of models of care. And Dr Jennifer Thor will inform you of better approaches to address behaviours of concern that would require comprehensive collaborative multidisciplinary assessments of an individual so that other determinants of behaviour can be identified and addressed. Witnesses will tell you how often there is no interaction between a medical practitioner and a behaviour support practitioner to consider or develop alternatives to chemical restraint. People with cognitive disability are often escorted to see medical practitioners by a family member or a support worker. And those people may have a vested interest in seeking a simple solution of a chemical restraint rather than opting for a more intensive approach of capacity building. As with other hearings, you'll hear about the role and importance of advocates. And you'll hear from a number of advocates, Diane Toohey and Cathy Kendall from Sufi, Joanna Mullins, an independent advocate with Independent Advocacy North Queensland, and Darian McLean, an advocate with Valid. Ms McLean will tell you about her work facilitating a valid Behaviours of Concern Peer Support Action Group and her interaction with various service providers. But she'll also share with you the experience of her son's life in various group homes and the trauma he has experienced because of restrictions on his freedom and independence. Ms Mullins will tell you about advocating for a First Nations teenager who I'll call Robin. Robin has autism and an intellectual disability. Robin's whole life has been a struggle. Ms Mullins will tell you Robin has been prescribed different psychotropic medications throughout Robin's childhood, starting when Robin was five years old. She will tell you that in 2017, Robin did not have support workers to offer core support. There was no positive behaviour support plan in place, no consistent medical care. And Robin had not been connected with other services such as Education or Allied Health Service. Ms Mullins will tell you about the steps taken to provide better supports and healthcare for Robin. And she will explain the processes that resulted in approved chemical restraints. You will hear there is a lack of independent advocacy for many people with behaviour support needs who may have very limited information to support networks. With respect to safeguards, commissioners, you'll hear witnesses tell you about the importance of a number of safeguards from effective laws and regulations, but also gaining access to people who become invisible and voiceless. And this includes the community visitor schemes and some practices in Queensland. You'll also hear about mechanisms for making complaints and the powers of the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commissioner in relation to complaints and incidents of non-compliance. Another recurrent issue for this Royal Commission is data. And a number of witnesses will tell you there is limited data and the absence of data is a pressing issue. Professor Keith McVilly will tell you about his research and why the prevalence rates of restrictive interventions are difficult to determine, partly because the restrictive interventions are defined differently across jurisdictions, which in turn means that data is collected in different ways and will also vary. Related to data is you'll hear about the importance of funding and research in Australia. And you'll hear that there is a need for ongoing research and evaluation to understand and support change in this area, to look at prescribing practices, including off-label and the PBS implications, to look at methods and the PBS implications, to look at methods of support and to encourage deep prescription of psychotropic medications. Both Dr Franklin and Professor Troller will raise issues in relation to research. And Professor Troller will tell you that Australia could look to a major national initiative launched in the United Kingdom in 2016 by the National Health Service to improve prescribing of psychotropic medication in people with intellectual disability and autism. That initiative is called Stop Overmedicating People with a Learning Disability, Autism or Both, commonly called STOMP. And he will say, in his opinion, consideration of what elements of such a program could be applied in Australia is warranted. You will hear evidence from Dr David Branford about the establishment of STOMP and the inquiries undertaken in the UK following the Winterbourne View scandal exposed by the BBC Panaraba Programme. This led to scrutiny of prescribing of psychotropic medication to people with cognitive disability in the UK. Very shortly, you will hear from Paula McGowan about her involvement with STOMP following the death of her son Oliver. She commenced a public campaign that led to further scrutiny and change concerning how medical and disability staff should be better trained about people with intellectual disability and behaviours of concern, and this has led to the Oliver McGowan Mandatory Training Programme being rolled out in the UK. As you've heard in earlier public hearings, including the recent public hearing on the impact of COVID-19 on people with disability, there needs to be more effective integration between the Health and Disability Services, and there needs to be tools to aid clinical practitioners, clinical practice to support medical practitioners in assessing and managing the prescription of psychotropic medication to people with intellectual and developmental disability. There are lessons Australia may learn from the experience of the UK, and Paula McGowan will tell you about the importance of health and disability services to face these very difficult disabilities, and she will say that Australia should not have to wait for a case such as Oliver's to come along. There are likely to be a range of other issues that arise during the course of this hearing, and may I remind those following the proceedings that some of the evidence may be distressing, and the Commission encourages those watching to be mindful that some topics may be upsetting, and we encourage those to seek support. The contact details for the Blue Not Foundation can be found on the Royal Commission's website. Finally, I want to say something about the way in which this hearing will be conducted. For this public hearing, the Royal Commission is not conducting coronial inquests or professional conduct inquiries. It will not be making findings of negligence or breaches of laws, be they civil or criminal. The Royal Commission does not intend to be a substitute for local complaint processes, internal investigations or coronial inquiries. The Royal Commission is not a court and cannot provide remedies for individuals. In this respect, the Royal Commission will not be making findings as to whether a particular person, service provider, medical practitioner or health service breached the law or any guideline or policy. The focus of this public hearing is the experience and impact of the use of psychotropic medication and the need for alternative measures to manage behaviours of concern, however they so be described. This hearing will focus on the systems, processes and ways to better protect people with disability from violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation. May I also remind those following these proceedings about the provisions in the Royal Commission's Act for the protection of witnesses? And I refer in particular to Section 6M, it will be available on the Royal Commission's website. So finally, Commissioners, there are a number of parties who have been granted leave to appear at this public hearing, and it may be appropriate to take their appearances now before a short break.
Yes, thank you, Ms Eastman. I invite the parties who have been given leave to appear to announce their appearance. Perhaps if we start with the state of Queensland that seems to have appeared on our screen.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. My name is MacMillan, initials K.A. I appear with Ms Clohesy, instructed by Crown Law, for the state of Queensland.
Thank you, Ms MacMillan. State of New South Wales, I also see on the screen.
Commissioner, my name is Gail Furness. I'm instructed by the Crown Solicitors Office in New South Wales to appear for the state of New South Wales.
Thank you, Ms Furness. Is there anybody else who wishes to make, announce an appearance? Yes?
Yes, if the Commission pleases, it's Geoffrey Kennard here. I appear for the Commonwealth with Ms Munro.
Thank you, Mr Kennard. Is that the totality of appearances to be announced? Thank you. If that being the case, it is now five to eleven. If we adjourn for twenty minutes and resume at eleven fifteen.
Commissioners, I was going to ask it for your indulgence to adjourn for up to five minutes, then we'll take Ms McGowan's evidence and then...
Oh, so we're going to have a short break?
Very short break.
Very short break. All right. In my obedient mode, we shall take a short break.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.
The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Miss Eastman.
Commissioners, the first witness is Paula McGowan. She's here in the hearing room in Sydney and she'll take an affirmation.
Thank you. Miss McGowan, if you wouldn't mind following the instructions of my associate who will stand up and explain to you what is going to happen. That's okay.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Miss McGowan. Miss Eastman will now ask you some questions.
So your name is Paula Catherine McGowan? And I might just need you to speak up a little bit. And you are an early years teacher?
I am.
And you have made a statement for the Royal Commission on the 5th of September. Is that right?
That is, yes, correct.
Commissioners, you'll find a copy of the statement in tender bundle part A at tab one with some additional material behind tabs two, three and four. And Commissioners, can I ask you to receive the statement and the additional material into evidence and mark the exhibit as 6.1 and then 6.1.1 through to 6.1.3?
Thank you, yes, we shall do that.
Now, Miss McGowan, you're going to read part of your statement and you've got a copy there. Before you do so, can you confirm that the contents of your statement are true?
They are.
Can I now invite you to start reading at paragraph two? And we're going to stop along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Paula Catherine McGowan and I am married to Thomas McGowan. And we are the parents of Thomas Oliver McGowan, known as Oliver, who died aged 18 on the 11th of November 2016 in Southmead Hospital, Bristol, United Kingdom. References in this statement to 'we', 'us' or 'our' refer to my husband and I. Tom was in the military in the UK and transferred to the Australian Air Force directly after Oliver's inquest in April 2018. We now live in Australia and have Australian citizenship. When we lived in England, I was working as a teacher with children who had additional needs, particularly those with autism and intellectual disability. In the United Kingdom, the term learning disability is used to describe intellectual disability. References in this statement to learning disability should be taken to also mean intellectual disability. My passion and drive has always been to give equal, positive and quality education to all children. It is my role to mediate and modify a curriculum that is accessible for every child. Every child matters irrespective of ability or disability. We are supporters of the National Health Service, known as the NHS, campaign on stopping the over-medication of people with intellectual disability, autism or both, which is known as the STOMP campaign, which will be discussed later. This campaign in England was started to address the inappropriate and over-use of psychotropic medication to manage behaviour in people with intellectual disability. I believe that there are several lessons from the STOMP campaign and related developments in the UK that would be useful for Australia in addressing the same issues here. As set out in Article 25 of the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, all people with disabilities have the right to health and high-quality healthcare without discrimination. This means that psychotropic medication should only ever be used in appropriate circumstances, safely and with the consent of the person with disability, not as a first resort in order to control their perceived behaviour. Clinicians should treat in partnership with the patient, their families and carers using a non-pharmaceutical approach and evaluate the effectiveness of that approach over an agreed period of time.
Can I ask you a pause there? You're about to tell us about Oliver and you wanted to share a photograph of Oliver. So we'll put that up on the screen now. Commissioner, this might be one of the technical glitches that you asked us to be patient with. So, Miss McGowan, while the photo is coming up, can I ask you just to keep reading and paragraph seven, you start to tell us about Oliver and his photo will come up, I think, as you speak.
We have a glitch technician, technique for determining when we can go back. So they'll let us know and we'll work out when the photo can be shown.
Thank you. Let me tell you about my beautiful son, Oliver. From the moment Oliver was born, my husband and I knew that he was special and our love for him was simply overwhelming. Oliver was born a month premature and at three weeks of age, he developed bacterial meningitis. He was very ill and we were told by the doctors that they simply did not expect him to survive. However, he began to recover. Two weeks after discharge, Oliver developed a second episode of meningitis and sadly the meningitis caused Oliver to have an infarction, so a stroke, to his brain, which resulted in a mild hemiplegia, cerebral palsy, focal seizure epilepsy, a mild intellectual disability and later on, a diagnosis of high-functioning autism. But Oliver's disabilities didn't hold him back. He met all his developmental milestones and was placed on the average percentile charts. He had an absolutely steely determination and can-do attitude. He played football for the South West Centre of Excellence Cerebral Palsy England Development Squad, so he was playing for England FA. He was also a registered T35 athlete with the power of 10 and was ranked third best in the country for running 200 metres. Oliver was a member of Team Bath Athletic Club and harboured a realistic ambition of becoming a Paralympian. Oliver was a natural leader who became a school prefect and an active member of the school council at his high school. He attained and passed GCSE, which stands for the General Certificate of Secondary Education in England, and BTEC, which stands for the Business and Technology Education Council in England Qualifications. And he went on to attend a specialist further education college for people with physical disabilities, acquired brain injuries and associated learning difficulties. The college's opinion of Oliver was very complimentary. They were writing how friendly and kind he was. He was supporting students who were far less able than himself. They highlighted his wicked sense of humour. They themselves also had aspirations for him to start a sports college at a local ski centre. As you can see, Oliver brought so much happiness and fun to our lives. He always saw the best in everything and everyone and he taught us all how to look at things differently. His courage and enthusiasm for life was just simply inspirational. Now, we were told by Oliver's neurologist that he had a full life expectancy and he would live an independent life with a small amount of support. However, in October 2015, Oliver was admitted to a children's hospital having what we and the college staff recognised to be simple partial focal seizures. And quite rightly, these caused Oliver to be scared and confused. After being discharged from hospital, Oliver continued to have simple partial seizures, around one per fortnight. And he was given antidepressant medication, which surprised us because Oliver wasn't depressed. Oliver loved life and life certainly seemed to love Oliver. When this medication was increased, it caused a change to Oliver's mood and increased his seizures greatly. And as a result, he was admitted back to the same hospital in December 2015. But this time, Oliver was given an antipsychotic medication. But Oliver didn't have a diagnosis of psychosis or mental illness. We absolutely strongly believed that the doctors were misunderstanding Oliver's normal autistic behaviours. Oliver was treated at several hospitals for those seizures. And during the course of these treatments, he was given antipsychotic medication on a number of occasions. This medication was given to him because he was displaying what were perceived to be challenging behaviours whilst he was in seizure. In reality, his behaviour was the very same as any other person's would be in seizure and compromised. Oliver was frightened and as a result, quite rightly, he was anxious. We believe that if Oliver had not have had the labels of autism and intellectual disability attached to him, he would absolutely not have been prescribed psychotropic medications.
I just ask you to pause there. So I understand that the photo that we're going to show when you started talking about Oliver is now available. So we'll put that photo up.
Is that correct? No, it's not correct. Apparently the photograph is not available. As yet.
I apologise, Miss McGowan. The effect, Donna. We are having the technical glitches today. I apologise for that. That's Oliver.
That's my beautiful son.
How old was he when that photo was taken?
Oliver, this is just months before Oliver went into hospital. This is the normal Oliver that we knew and his friends, teachers, everybody recognised.
Okay. And so that's the Oliver that you've spoken about? And you were up at, to the point of your statement about Oliver then being in the hospital and the administration of these medications. So can I take you back to paragraph 14? Thank you. Do you want to start from there?
Yes, that's great, thank you. The effects of these medications were absolutely catastrophic. Oliver's seizure threshold and agitation deteriorated and we didn't recognise that beautiful boy that you can all see up there. Oliver was now hallucinating. He was now having 30 seizures a day, something we'd absolutely never seen happen before. Oliver was now having problems urinating. He had extremely high blood pressure readings and he was sweating profusely. We walked into Oliver's room one day and found him having what is known as an oculogyratic crisis, which is a serious dystonic side effect of those very medications, which caused his eyes to roll upwards.
Right. Can you pause there? And you wanted to show another photograph? And I'll give the number if that provides some assistance. So it's IND dot zero zero four one dot zero zero one dot zero zero four. Just put this photograph up.
Yeah, I think the photo is on.
That's a hard photo to look at.
To go from the Oliver that you have seen to exactly what a psychotropic medication can do is quite shocking.
Let's go back to what happened in the hospital. So this is a photo that you took of Oliver at that time. And what happened? Was he left for a period of time?
So Oliver himself, being the person he was, kept apologising for the state he was in. And Oliver was left like this for six long hours, as my husband and I heard the doctor in the doorway say, 'he's making it up, it's behavioural'. After six long hours, when they realised he wasn't making it up, pro-psychedeline had to be administered to counteract that reaction and it took 15 seconds to work. We strongly believe that the drugs were the cause of decline in Oliver's mood. It was obvious to us that the doctors and nurses had little to no understanding of autism and how autistic behaviours could present in a person with ongoing seizures. When Oliver was taken off this medication, his mood and seizure activity returned back to normal. It was clear to us that he was sensitive to antipsychotic medication. In October 2016, Oliver had a cluster of those very same partial seizures and was admitted to a general hospital. This time, he was intubated and as a result, developed pneumonia. Now, despite making it very clear to the doctors and nurses at the hospital that they absolutely did not have our or Oliver's permission to do so, Oliver was given an antipsychotic medication, namely al-Anzapine. Oliver had an adverse reaction to the al-Anzapine and developed Neuroleptic Malignant Syndrome, known as NMS. And as a result, we were told by the doctors that Oliver's brain was now so badly swollen, it was bulging at the base of his skull. It was so badly damaged that Oliver was now profoundly disabled. Oliver had no more speech. There was no more understanding of language. He had absolutely no way of communicating. Oliver would be reliant on a tracheotomy and would be tube-fed for the rest of his life. Oliver was now paralysed. There was no more representing his country in athletics or football. That beautiful smile that we saw earlier, his sense of humour and those words of wisdom were gone forever. Oliver was silenced. The doctors told us that Oliver had no chance of recovery or return to any sort of meaningful life and the decision was made to turn his life support machines off. Oliver passed away on Armistice Day, the 11th of November 2016. This is a very poignant day for us, as Oliver is and was a military child and had lived all of his life as part of the United Kingdom's Royal Air Force family. Oliver died due to a combination of pneumonia and hypoxic brain injury. The brain injury was caused by seizures and Neuroleptic Malignant Syndrome, an absolute adverse reaction to that very first drug, al-Anzapine, that Oliver had requested not to be given. Oliver was given psychotropic medication as a consequence of behaviour whilst in seizure that was seen or perceived as challenging. However, we believe that there was a misunderstanding of his behaviour and that there was a failure to make reasonable adjustments. For Oliver, that would identify, you know, reasonable adjustments that would have helped Oliver manage his behaviour and his anxiety would definitely have de-escalated that. We believe that al-Anzapine should never have been given to Oliver as he was sensitive to antipsychotic medication. Several community-based consultant doctors who had seen Oliver had written exactly the same thing. We had asked throughout Oliver's care that he not be given antipsychotic medication. Our wishes were ignored and worse still, Oliver himself had made an advance verbal decision stating that he was not to be administered any antipsychotic medications. Cruelly, Oliver was reassured that this would not happen and his voice was not heard and it cost him his life.
To Miss McGowan, following Oliver's death, that galvanised you and your husband into action. You wanted to make sure that this would not happen again, but also that the community understood what happened to Oliver could happen to other people as well. And you set out in your statement how you developed an advocacy campaign. And you say in paragraph 27 that to gain public interest, you had to become social media smart. Now, you are very social media smart. What can you tell the Royal Commission about why you took the advocacy approach that you did and how you've used advocacy to highlight Oliver's case?
For me, I was absolutely ignorant where social media is concerned, but I was driven, absolutely driven. For us, Oliver was so high-functioning, we couldn't believe this had happened to Oliver. And I without doubt realised if it could happen to my son, it could happen to absolutely anybody else. So I'll just pick up from paragraph 27 if that's okay. So to gain public interest, I had to become social media smart and I joined Twitter and over 100 private autistic and learning-disabled groups on Facebook. I told people all about Oliver, explaining how clinicians were not effectively trained in how to understand autism and intellectual disability. I told them how they didn't understand how to make the most basic of reasonable adjustments, how this was wrong for the patients, but absolutely wrong for the clinicians also. I spent over 15 hours every single day continually asking people to sign my parliamentary petition. It really was incredibly time-consuming and really, really hard work. And I didn't allow myself time to grieve. I felt strongly that there were far too many people suffering like Oliver did for me not to do anything about it. And I challenged my grief into doing something positive and I still do this to this day. As part of Oliver's campaign, I travelled from Australia at my own expense and went across England, going into medical schools and hospital trusts, telling Oliver's story and teaching them about the most basic of reasonable adjustments, STOMP, which we've talked about, and the principles of ask, listen, do. And these principles are basic and they are: ask. Ask people with a learning disability, autism or both, their families and carers for their opinions and concerns about their treatment, that treatment that belongs to them. Listen. Listen to all involved and show respect to those opinions and concerns. Do. Do something about it and work in partnership with them.
And so this has led to the Oliver McGowan mandatory training in learning disability and autism. And you have worked on developing this particular training programme because you believe that doctors and clinicians, if they were trained in understanding autism and intellectual disability, that you might achieve better outcomes. What can you tell the Royal Commission about the Oliver McGowan mandatory training and the rollout that's presently occurring in the UK?
Thank you. The Oliver McGowan mandatory training in learning disability and autism is Oliver's legacy. When Oliver was being treated by the doctors and in hospital, I believed that the doctors and clinicians were trained in autism and intellectual disability. And I believe that they knew more than me. Me, as an early years educator specialising in autism and intellectual disability, I thought they knew more than me. However, it became clear from Oliver's inquest into his death that there was no mandatory training for health professionals in relation to this issue. On the 22nd of October 2018, I took my petition to the UK Parliament demanding that training on intellectual disability and autism be mandatory for all health and social care professionals. This petition ultimately led to the UK government making a commitment in 2019 to introduce the Oliver McGowan mandatory training in learning disability and autism for all health and social care staff. This commitment was outlined by the UK government in their consultation response that was titled 'Right to Be Heard'. This commitment was also in response to the recommendations made in the Second Annual Learning Disability Mortality Review. made in the Second Annual Learning Disability Mortality Review, which I will describe, describe below. The Oliver McGowan mandatory training in learning disability and autism is now being trialled in England and will then be evaluated before being rolled out nationally. I hope that we will also manage to get the UK Health and Social Care Act two thousand and eight, regulated twenty fourteen, amended to require all NHS and social care providers who carry out regulated activities to ensure that their staff have achieved the learning outcomes relevant to their role. Current plans are that these changes would come into force in April twenty twenty one.
Now, in your statement, you outline how you became involved in the STOMP campaign and provide the Royal Commission with a very detailed overview of the STOMP campaign. But I want to ask you about another campaign that you've also been involved in and ask you to talk about the importance of the Learning Disability Mortality Review, the LEADER issue. So this starts at paragraph fifty of your statements. And you say in the statement, this is a national programme that was established in twenty fifteen to conduct reviews of the deaths of people with learning disabilities. And I think someone just said, is a learning disability an intellectual disability? How's that language used between Australia and the UK?
So learning disability and intellectual disability is the same thing, absolutely the same thing. Leader-
About leader, tell us about leader and the importance of leader.
Leader is vital, I believe. LEADER, or the Learning Disability Mortality Review, is a national programme that was established in twenty fifteen to conduct reviews of the deaths of people with learning disabilities. The University of Bristol is one of the partners in the programme, which is funded and run by NHS England. Now, I understand that the programme was established in response to recommendations of the twenty thirteen report of the confidential inquiry into the premature deaths of people with intellectual disabilities known as SIPHOLD in the UK. SIPHOLD reported that compared to the general population, more people with learning disabilities died from causes that were potentially amenable to change by good quality healthcare. According to the University of Bristol website, a key part of the LEADER programme is to support local areas to review the deaths of all people with learning disabilities aged four years and over, irrespective of whether the death was expected or not, the course of death or the place of death. This enables them to identify good practice of what has worked well and what hasn't, as well as where improvements to the provisions of care could be made. Oliver's death is currently being reviewed through the LEADER process right now.
Right, so can I ask you to pause there? You don't know the outcome of that review yet, is that right?
That's right.
Now, in your statement, you've set out some lessons that you think might be lessons that Australia could learn. And can I ask you to talk to the Royal Commission about some of the lessons that you've observed, both from having lived in Australia now for a period of time and also your experience in the UK? So this is paragraph fifty four, and I think you wanted to read these last few parts of your statement to the Royal Commission.
Thank you.
I'd like you to do that.
Fifty four. I believe that there may be similar issues in Australia in respect of the over-medication and premature deaths of people with disability. As such, there are lessons that Australia could learn from the STOMP campaign and through the LEADER programme. The key lessons that could be applied in Australia are awareness, training and communication. I also think that Australia should conduct national reviews into the deaths of people with learning disabilities, like the LEADER programme. It is crucial to know how many deaths there are each year and how many of the people with learning disabilities who have died prematurely were taking psychotropic medications. Such reviews could examine whether people with learning disabilities are dying preventable deaths. Through such reviews, the causes of the high rates of premature deaths of people with intellectual disability and autism might be determined and addressed. Among other things, Australia must address why so many people with an intellectual disability are medicated off label. We need to ask whether alternative, non-pharmaceutical methods have been trialled first when a person shows perceived behaviours that challenge, and they must be evaluated. One of the key benefits of the STOMP campaign in England has been to promote awareness of this problem. In Australia, I work with children in schools and early years settings, and I am seeing for myself that there are children in nearly every classroom who are medicated to control perceived behaviours. I am seeing children who, in my opinion, are over-medicated. The children's reactions are very slow. They appear disengaged and are not always to interact with their peers. There are attitudinal problems with respect to the use of, the use of medication, and many people do not seem to be aware of alternatives, such as behaviour support or management techniques. When I have talked to members of the public in Australia about this issue, particularly people from older generations, they don't seem to know what to do other than to medicate people who have what they perceive to be behaviours that challenge. Greater awareness can highlight the inequalities in health and social care that people with intellectual disability and autism face in Australia. Awareness will also tell us, help to tell us, just how many people are dying premature and preventable deaths. It is important that health professionals, social care and disability support workers all have appropriate training in assisting people with an intellectual disability and autism. Australia should also have standardised mandatory training in relation to these issues. As I have stated above, when everybody has been given the same training, this allows for everyone to be, to be evaluated, assessed and monitored in respect to this issue. I believe the Oliver McGowan mandatory training in learning disability and autism could and should be adopted here in Australia to support clinicians in gaining understanding of alternatives to psychotropic medications, of how to make reasonable adjustments and of appropriate behaviour management. Communication with people with intellectual disability and their families about their health and treatment is very important. Some of the health professionals who treated my son did not properly listen to our or our son's views regarding the use of psychotropic medication. It is vital that the patient is kept at the heart of all decision-making, giving them an equal say in their care, their care and treatment that belongs to them. Health practitioners who are supporting and treating people who have a learning disability and/or autism should: A) Ask people with a learning disability, autism or both, their families and carers for their opinions and concerns about their treatment. Listen. Listen to all involved and show respect for those opinions and concerns. And C) Do something about it and work in partnership with them. They should treat all patients in a way that they would wish to be treated themselves with respect and dignity. They must remember that the care that they are giving should always be in partnership with the patient and where appropriate with their families and carers. They must also understand how to make reasonable adjustments and how to modify their language and communication. They must ensure that their body language is non-threatening, not invading the space of the patient with intellectual disability, not standing over them. They must be careful not to use a lot of medical jargon. They need to be aware that their patients may need time to process what is being said and they need information to be repeated. This does not mean talking to patients as though they are children. In conclusion, ultimately, however, there must be government support and commitment to addressing these problems. The government must start taking these issues seriously from start to finish. I have observed that Australia is a very proud country, which says that it treats its citizens with fairness. However, I don't think this is always the case where people with intellectual disability and/or autism are concerned. The work of researchers like Professor Julian Trolle show that they are not always able to have equal health outcomes as the rest of the general public. It is not fair or right that they are dying younger than their peers. It is not fair that professionals, clinicians, are not given the education and skills required to help them enable patients with intellectual disability and autism to have better healthcare outcomes. I truly hope that the Royal Commission will make recommendations that, that will help a story like Oliver's ever happen to be told here in Australia. Thank you.
Ms McGowan, on behalf of the Royal Commission, we express, express our condolences for the loss of Oliver, but also to thank you and your husband for coming to the hearing room today and to share your experience and also to assist the Royal Commission to understand about some of the developments that you've been involved in. It pleases the Commission that's the end of Ms McGowan's evidence.
Thank you. I'll just ask if either Commissioner McEwan or Commissioner Atkinson have any questions of Ms McGowan. First, perhaps Commissioner McEwan, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chair. I have one, one question. Ms McGowan, you talked about the Oliver McGowan mandatory training. Could you just tell perhaps briefly which individuals and organisations may be involved in designing and delivering that training?
I will. So there was a trial where lots of organisations, it was open to the public, charities, everybody, where people were to put, they were to place a bid that would look at, it's called the Core Capabilities Framework and the Right to Be Heard document. And we were looking at what types of training they would put forward and they were selected. Oliver's training must address culture. We have to look at subconscious bias. We look, have to look at the laws, the Equalities Act, the Human Rights Act, the Mental Capacity Act. We need to address reasonable adjustments. And the consortia that was selected will be looking at all of these core ingredients. But Oliver's training, to me, I always look at Oliver and what would have made a difference to Oliver and what could potentially have saved his life. And that is what Oliver's training is about. But if I can add quickly, I feel strongly that it is wrong that we expect our clinicians, so our doctors, nurses, social workers, that we expect them to suddenly know how to help a person with intellectual disability and/or autism when they are in a sensory, in a sensory crisis. How can we expect them to suddenly know what to do, how to de-escalate a situation if they've not been given the skills to do so? We wouldn't expect them to go out and fix a car if they've not been given mechanical training. So why do we expect them to suddenly know how to, you know, to treat and support our most vulnerable people? They simply don't have the skills to do so right now. And it is affecting lives, it costs lives and it costs the quality of life. And that's what Oliver's training is all about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkinson, who I cannot see on the screen at the moment, but nonetheless, is there a question? Have we lost her? She said, she said. As you can see, Ms McGowan, our technology is flawless in every respect. I want to add to what Professor Seesman has said to express on behalf of the Commissioners, our condolences on the loss of Oliver. But to say how proud you can be of what you are doing in this memory, the evidence you've given is very important to us and will form part of the permanent record of this commission. And you can rest assured that we will pay very close attention to the Commissions. Thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. If we can take an adjournment now till probably twelve or just after twelve and the next witness will be Dr Catherine Franklin.
Well, we'll take an adjournment till five past twelve. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Mrs Eastman.
Commissioners, the next witness is Dr Catherine Franklin, who's joining us from Brisbane on the video link. I'll just say it's teething problems this morning, I'm sure we'll get there.
We have Dr Franklin, I do believe.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Dr Franklin, with a bit of luck, my associate will administer either the oath or the affirmation, as the case may be, so please follow her instructions.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do.
Dr Franklin, thank you very much. Mrs Eastman will now ask you some questions.
Commissioners, you'll find a copy of Dr Franklin's statement in tender bundle part A behind tab five, and a copy of Dr Franklin's CV is at tab six of the tender bundle. And I'll ask you in a moment to receive those documents into evidence and be marked exhibit 6.2 and exhibit 6.2.1. Dr Franklin, can I start with you? Your name is Catherine Susan Franklin.
Yes.
And you are the Director and a Consultant Psychiatrist at the MARTA Intellectual Disability and Autism Service at the MARTA Hospital in South Brisbane.
I am.
And you're also a Senior Research Fellow with the Queensland Centre for Intellectual and Developmental Disability, the MARTA Research Institute affiliated with the University of Queensland.
I am.
You've prepared a statement for the Royal Commission dated 10 September. Are the contents of the statement true?
Yes, they are.
All right, I want to start by asking you about your professional background and your qualifications and your experience as a medical practitioner. You tell the Royal Commission in your statement that you've been psychiatrists.
The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Mrs Eastman.
Commissioners, the next witness is Dr Catherine Franklin, who's joining us from Brisbane on the video. I think we have, I'm sorry, Dr Franklin, we are having some fairly significant technical
We have Dr Franklin, I do believe.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Dr Franklin.
I'm going to try again, third time lucky. So can I?
Go through the affirmation as the case may be, so please follow. Let's take a break for five minutes and let us hope that the IT problems can be fixed in that break. I'm terribly sorry, Dr Franklin.
That the evidence you shall give.
We shall resume in.
The Royal Commission is now in session.
Dr Franklin, we discovered the source of the problem, but we're not going to mention it.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. So I'll backtrack a little bit. I think we were just up to the stage where I wanted to ask you a little bit about your experience and background. So you've been a psychiatrist with 23 years' experience as a medical practitioner, and 16 of those 23 years is working as a psychiatrist with a subspecialty in the area of psychiatry for young people and adults with intellectual and developmental disability. And you say in your statement you've worked with adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities since 2004. Can I ask you to tell the Royal Commission about the nature of the work and the nature of the subspecialty of psychiatry for young people and adults with intellectual and developmental disability?
So I actually started working in this area in the United Kingdom in 2004, and there really was very little to know training or work in this area in Australia at that time. When I came back to Australia, there were very few people working in this space, and it has grown over time. My clinical work is really based on seeing young people and adults who are referred by general practitioners or specialist medical practitioners for a review, often, very often, around their behaviour.
And you have done some work with the University of Queensland Centre called the Developmental Disability Unit, which was later the Queensland Centre for Intellectual and Developmental Disability. And is that part of the work that you did with Dr Nick Lennox, who the Royal Commission heard from at public hearing four earlier this year? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct, and that's where most of my work has been.
And the MARTA Intellectual Disability and Autism Service is commonly called MIDUS, is that right?
Yes.
And you say in your statement, in terms of MIDUS, it's a small service with a small recurrent budget, and that hasn't been increased for five years. How does this impact on the nature of the services that MIDUS can provide to people with intellectual disability in Queensland?
We are really the only outpatient clinic in Queensland for adults with intellectual disability or autism. And the problem that being a very small clinic raises is that we have a long waiting list and we can't respond as quickly as we would like to be able to see people. We also can't offer ongoing follow-up over time.
I want to ask you now about some of the areas of your research and some of the research work in relation to intellectual disability and psychotropic medication. So this is part of some of the work that's occurred at the MIDUS clinic. And at paragraph 16, you set out for the Royal Commission the nature of some of the research work based on clinical experience. Can I invite you to tell the Royal Commission a little bit about the research and the nature of the clinical experience supporting the research work?
So I think that it would be important for the Commission to understand that I am a hard at clinician, and the research that I've done and the education and other work is all based on my clinical experience and interest in the area. And so my involvement in research has been around with Dr Nicky Edwards, around the attitudes of psychiatrists and psychiatry trainees. It's been on trying to find causes for particular specific health problems in people with Down Syndrome, and it's been on trying to understand autism and mental health better. But the main thing, the main theme is probably that it's research that's clinically relevant.
And you've recently led an 18-month project called the MIDUS MHS InReach Project. What can you tell us about that project and where is the research up to at the present time?
So that was an 18-month clinical project that was funded and commissioned by the Queensland Health Mental Health Service, Mental Health Alcohol and Other Drugs Service. And the intent of that was to work with the clients identified by the mental health services as having intellectual developmental disability and being complex. And that involved working with all of the different mental health services across Queensland and travelling across Queensland and providing specialised assessments and management advice to the mental health services. So.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, so the project has concluded and we're really just in the process of summarising the findings and analysing the information.
Will those findings be published at some stage?
I hope that some of the findings will be able to be published, yes. That's my intent.
I want to move now to the next part of your statement, and we asked you in preparation for this hearing to assist us with some of the definitions and concepts and the way in which some of the language is used, both in a health sector and also disability sector. And I think, as you're aware, some of the expressions can be controversial, and there's not always agreement about what is the right language and expression to use. So can I start by asking you about some of the basics? So bear with us for those following on the live broadcast if this is common knowledge, but not necessarily to everyone. So psychotropic or psychotropic medication, we've had both pronunciations. What is that medication and what does it do?
Well, as I outlined in my statement, really, psychotropic medication is a term that broadly refers to any medication that affects the brain, but is used clinically really to refer to medications that treat mental illness. The main classes of psychotropic medications are antidepressants, antipsychotics, mood stabilisers, which includes lithium, and some anticonvulsants, anxiolytics for anxiety, hypnotics for sleep, stimulants and anti-dementia medications.
And then in terms of mental disorder and mental illness, some people might say these are fairly outdated expressions, we should be using psychosocial disability. But in your statement, you explain to us why the expression 'mental disorder' or 'condition' is used and the context in which it's used for this Royal Commission's consideration of the use of psychotropic medication. So can I ask you to just tell us a little bit about mental disorder and the context in which it's used for the discussion that we're having this week?
So I think the reason I thought it was important to establish this difference really is because the terminology is important and used differently in different sorts of legislation as well. But a mental disorder is a broad description for a syndrome that's characterised by clinically significant disturbance in someone's cognition, emotional regulation or behaviour. That can reflect dysfunction in psychological, biological or developmental processes underlying mental functioning. It includes mental illness, but it also includes intellectual disability and it includes epilepsy. And so that concept of a mental disorder is quite different to the concept of a mental illness, which is not necessarily pervasive, certainly not something that somebody is born with. And a mental illness is a condition characterised by a disturbance of thought, mood, perception or memory. And so those are two distinct entities, but you'll hear both terms used.
And in terms of people with intellectual disability, is there any information, by statistics or otherwise, as to the prevalence of mental illness in the population of people with intellectual disability? So I think often medically called comorbid, is that right?
That's right. Yes, another turn of terminology that could probably do with a review. Mental illness is at least, but most of the literature would suggest that mental illness is actually more common in people with intellectual or developmental disability. And so then this becomes relevant to this discussion as well.
Now, the expression challenging behaviour or behaviours of concern. You've said in your statement these are expressions which are used synonymously by the NDIS. Can I ask you, in terms of these expressions, do they have a clinical meaning, and if so, how and why? And if they don't have a clinical meaning, why are we using these expressions?
Well, I think like many types of terminology, they evolve over time. But the problem with labels is that they become misused over time. And I think the term challenging behaviour, when it was first introduced, was introduced to refer, as the definition says, to behaviour that threatens the quality of life or safety of the individual. The problem is that over time, people have come to use that term to describe any behaviour. And also there's concern that there is the innuendo that the problem lies within the individual. And so that.
And is that the case?
No. So really, the way that we understand behaviours of concern or challenging behaviour is, and one of the probably most revolutionary at the time ways of understanding it, is to think about the fact that it's occurring in context and that it often relates a lot to the environment around the person. And that thought that if things could be changed, perhaps the challenging behaviour would no longer exist. This then suggests that it's not inherent to the person.
In terms of sort of usage in the community, I think these expressions are used. In terms of your practice and your experience, is there any move away from using these expressions and finding some better, more appropriate language that deals with medical issues, but also understands the a social model of disability and a human rights approach to disability?
I think in the academic literature that there's ongoing discussion and that there is movement most recently to behaviours of concern, but there's probably still still issues with that, and some of that comes down to the culture of understanding. Within the medical profession, the difficulty comes when challenging behaviour is considered a diagnosis in its own right. And really challenging behaviour is a symptom, not a diagnosis.
And if I just go with the phrase challenging behaviour at the moment, is there any evidence of the prevalence of challenging behaviour for people with intellectual disability that has been reported or recorded? And you make a reference to this in paragraph 26 of your statement. What can you tell us about that?
The prevalence rates vary in the literature between about 5.7% and 17%, so a fairly broad range, but not insubstantial across the population of people that's with people with intellectual disability.
And you describe in your statement that there is a need to understand challenging behaviour as a form of communication. Can I ask you, from the perspective of your work and looking at this from a clinician, can you help us in understanding how we would look at challenging behaviour as a means of communication?
So from a clinical point of view, we often hear people say, there's no trigger, there's no reason, they just do it, it's spontaneous. But I think that the specialists in behaviour support and across that area will do all agree that behaviour is always communicating something. And I like to give the example that all of us communicate and all of us do actually use behaviour to communicate. Some of that is more adaptive than others. But for people who have limited verbal communication, their behaviour becomes sometimes their only way of communicating. And it may be communicating that they don't like something that somebody else is doing. They are in pain or that they feel something else. But importantly, there is always a reason. And that thought that there is always a reason is what we try to follow in the clinical context, and that's trying to find what the reasons are and why the behaviour is really occurring.
When you're looking at that circumstance of communication, are you looking at challenging behaviours as identifying acute situations where there might be a very significant problem and the behaviour reflects that? Or are you looking at that in terms of perhaps just day-to-day behaviour? As you said, we can all display behaviours, it might be the tone of our voice, it might be an expression on our face, it might be a tightening of body language. I want to understand from you in terms of understanding challenging behaviour as a form of communication is whether it's only in an acute setting or whether it's the everyday?
And so I think it's still all communicating, but what we need to do in a professional sense is to try and draw the line between what is normal communication and what is behaviour of concern. And that's where some of these attempts at definitions come in to really try to look at the the problems that the behaviour might cause for the individual and the consequences of that behaviour. And so really then that's how you arrive at these definitions around behaviours of concern or challenging behaviours. And really it's the impact and the severity of it that delineates that from what might be more within the realms of normal communication.
So I want to move now to when challenging behaviour and psychotropic medication meet. And you say in paragraph 29 of your statement that psychotropic medication is most commonly prescribed for people with intellectual or developmental disability by general practitioners, paediatricians, psychiatrists and neurologists. And it's prescribed for the treatment of mental illness, as we've referred to earlier, but also for the primary purpose of reducing challenging behaviours. So the Royal Commission will hear during the course of this week that when one's looking at prescribing of psychotropic medication, if it's prescribed to manage behaviour, then that can be a form of what's called chemical restraint. And if it's prescribed by a medical practitioner for a medical condition, then it's not a restraint and it might be dealt with differently. So just looking at what you say in paragraph 29 and that the medication is prescribed by general practitioners, paediatricians, psychiatrists and neurologists, is it the case that the medication will always be prescribed by a medical practitioner regardless of whether it's for therapeutic use or non-therapeutic use?
Yes.
So I can't look up on the internet and say, well, I think I might order this. The doctor is the gateway, is that right, to the prescribing of psychotropic medication? All right, well, exploring that further, if a doctor is prescribing psychotropic medication, you make some observations about the history of prescribing. uh you make some observations about the history of prescribing such medication for people with intellectual disability over a a number of years, touching back on institutionalisation of people with intellectual disability and then more recent changes. So can I ask you in paragraph thirty of your statement to just tell us a little bit about what your research has taken you to in looking back at the practices in the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties?
I think the history is very important, particularly in psychiatry, but particularly also working in this area. A lot of the patients that I work with have um have lived in institutions. And understanding that experience for them is helpful in and understanding the how medications came about is also helpful in looking at the situation that we have today. Um, and I think that one of the there were multiple issues around institutionalisation and deinstitutionalisation. But it is noted historically that the development of antipsychotics and soon after antidepressants um in the late nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties revolutionised the treatment of mental illness um and is thought to have contributed to the deinstitutionalisation movement. Um, but we also know that people with intellectual disability were also treated they whilst they some of them may have had mental illness, it wasn't considered that they could have mental illness and they were treated with medications as well, often in very high doses. Um, and that's where we see some of these practices um dating back to.
And at paragraph thirty two, you say, in your view, deinstitu- the deinstitutionalised movement occurring at the same time where there was an increased focus on human rights and normalisation theory effectively distanced people with intellectual disability from the medical profession. Now, I think Commissioner McEwan has a question he wants to ask you about what you say in paragraph thirty two.
Thank you, Miss Eastman. Dr Franklin, within the context of that statement you've made, what do you think might be some of the solutions to ensure that people with disability can get a access to, you know, support that you provide when they are living in the institutionalised setting?
So if I understand correctly, um you're asking about a accessing services from the community or? Um.
Thank you, uh thank you. I'll be I'll try and be clear as possible. So people have moved from institutions into the community. And my reading of your clause thirty two is that you, in your view, this effectively distanced people with intellectual disability and the medical profession. So what are some of your ideas or solutions to ensure that they can get access to the medical profession?
As as a medical professional, I have to say that there has that the the divide still still remains and this there seems to be really a lack of um feeling of responsibility for people with intellectual disability as especially a group requiring um requiring a additional, if anything, care rather than less care. Um, and I think that that there is still, um you know, that was back in the nineteen fifties and sixties, but there is still very much a um, this is not a health problem, this is your disability. Um, and you know, you don't need, we don't, we don't look after people with disability or we don't look after people with autism. Um, and it's still, there is still that ingrained culture of we don't, we don't do this work, someone else must do this work. Um, and and I I sometimes wonder whether if we did ask everybody, I think people would really think that there were extensive health services for people with intellectual and developmental disability, um and they might be shocked to learn that there are not. Um, but I think that this is this is um where it it came from. I do want to make clear that deinstitutionalisation um had lots of issues, but overall people have had a much better life in the community. There are still people living in institutions now. Um, and there is a lot of work to try and get them out of there. But I think that the whole the whole role of medications and the medical profession really in facilitating what was a lot of over-medicating of people, um as well as a lot of other abuse clouded the issue. And um and that that divide seems to have um dated from there.
You you so also tell the Royal Commission that in your view and clinical experience that in the population of people without intellectual disability and developmental disability, many people exercise choice and they have a choice of being non-compliant with psychotropic medication. But for people with intellectual disability, you don't see that choice in the same way. And um and you make this observation that their medications are often administered and supervised by carers, which means those with support are highly compliant with prescribed medication. And just pause it, there's a little tension in that because isn't it the case that if the medication's prescribed for a proper therapeutic process with an underlying diagnosis, that the use of the medications can enhance a person's quality of life and help them manage uh their particular health situation? And in turn, that may facilitate participation in the community. So non-compliance can be an issue. But are you saying in the statement that the high level of compliance for people with intellectual disability might also hide the fact that there's not choice and consent in relation to when and how psychotropic medication might be used? Am I right in understanding that that's what you're talking about in that part of your statement?
Yes, from a clinical point of view, um working with people who don't have intellectual or developmental uh disability, which I've done in the past, um many people do a- and have the right to exercise that choice. Um, and it 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 is striking to me that people with intellectual developmental disability don't don't have a voice. Um, and even sometimes when they do, it's it's not listened to. And I think that this is, this is one thing, if it's a a treatment with proven efficacy for a known cause that it's effective for treating, um but if we're talking about psychotropic medication, that is a different situation. Um.
And and is the consequence perhaps of high level of compliance uh mean that it just sort of becomes the norm? And that people with intellectual or developmental disability tend to stay on psychotropic medication for a long time?
It it means a high level of compliance means a higher level of side effects. Um, it also means that they stay on medication for longer. And then if a problem or something else happens, then the dose is often increased or another medication is added. And um and that's often how we see this um increasing pattern with age where people uh started on medication in their childhood. And as they grow, the dose has increased, more is added. And we have this not uncommon um picture of people on multiple psychotropic medications by the time they're in their their twenties or their thirties.
Okay. Right, so I want to move now to the prescription rates of psychotropic medication in intellectual disability.
Just before you leave that, would you mind if I asked a a question? Dr Franklin, in the in the same paragraph that Commissioner McEwan asked you about, paragraph thirty two, uh you talk about the divide between the medical profession and people with intellectual disability. And I think in your oral evidence, you suggested that some in the medical profession say, well, this is not a problem or an issue for us. Uh, we don't deal with these kinds of problems, people with intellectual disability. Yet the gateway to psychotropic drugs must be doctors, they must prescribe. And there seems to be um something of a paradox there, because if there is overuse of psychotropic medications, it must be doctors who are dealing with people with intellectual disability and by hypothesis are treating them inappropriately. I'm just not quite clear how the those two sides of the coin mesh, if I can mix my metaphors terribly.
Well, I think that's a very good point and I can understand what you're saying. Um, I think that that both of those things um are quite likely to be simultaneously accurate and probably what how that contributes to the final picture is that that person coming and getting a prescription has not been able to be seen at a local mental health service or not been able to be seen at the local hospital. Um, and yes, whilst they might be getting a prescription from the the um from a doctor, they very likely haven't had access to proper investigation of at least medical causes without even thinking about behavioural causes for things. So I think that both of those things are true, but I do, I do understand your point.
Thank you.
So i- in terms of prescription rates, you say in your statement that there's been international concern about over-prescription of psychotropic medication for at least thirty years. And you also say that one of the difficulties is getting reliable data in relation to the levels of prescribing of psychotropic medication. And that's both generally, but also used as a a way of restraining a person, so the behavioural issues. In terms of the research that's available, what can you tell us about the prevalence of prescribing? And I think you've done some research with Professor Troller in relation to this issue.
Well, I think that there's um, I I think if we're looking around um paragraph thirty five, I think um at uh the the rates there are quoted from one of Professor Lennox's um studies from his um comprehensive health assessment um programme and some of the later programmes that found um psychotropic medication uh prescribing rates of about forty three to fifty four percent um in the in the community, which are high, those are very high rates.
Now, par- paragraph thirty seven, there's the Australian study of general practice encounters. And that um revealed some interesting practices, did it not, in terms of prescribing by comparing a population without intellectual disability and a population with intellectual disability? What did that research tell us?
That was a study of Professor Julian Trollers and um the I I found that quite interesting in that the the two most frequently prescribed medication groups in order for people with intellectual disability were antipsychotics and then anticonvulsants. But the population without intellectual disability, it was antihypertensives for blood pressure and penicillin antibiotics. So that really is is quite a stark contrast. And I think an insight into into the the stark differences in in people's um lives and the medications that they're being prescribed.
And you make mention that in terms of addressing some of these practices, that some countries have introduced legislation. And you make an observation about the STOMP campaign, which the Commission's heard a little bit about this morning and will hear more about during the course of this week. What's your experience with the STOMP campaign and its relevance to Australia, if at all?
I think that what in has, I think that what's interested and impressed me about about the STOMP campaign is is firstly that it was necessary. Um, following on from that, I think that um it it then is quite an innovative approach to a complex problem um that has helped to, I think, raise uh raise awareness around over-medication across a a number of different populations and groups, I think. So thinking about the general population, but also um the medical profession, also other health um health professions. Um, and so I I'm really quite impressed at the, I think, the ingenuity of it. But it also strikes me that um that it that it was at all necessary in the first place in this day and age.
Now, you've touched on the side effects, particularly if there's long-term use of psychotropic medication. And you develop this in your statement. Can you tell the Royal Commission about the nature of the side effects? But what does it mean in terms of a person with intellectual disability being perhaps um at higher risk of side effects and the impact in terms of a person's life expectancy and their overall health? What can you tell the Royal Commission about that?
I think the first thing to say is that side effects from psychotropic medications are common. Um, the most common side effects are mild and those can be things like nausea and headaches. Um, but then they can go on to sedation and affecting someone's cognitive functioning. But the side effects are broad, they they also include impotence, weight gain, increased risk of diabetes, osteoporosis, Parkinsonian symptoms, um movement disorders and, albeit rarely, death. Um, there are a number of different ways that psychotropic medications can cause deaths in addition to neuroleptic malignant syndrome that we heard about this morning. It can also, um they can also affect the white blood cell count and they can cause cardiac arrhythmias. Um, so abnormal rhythm of the heart. All of those side effects I've just talked about are side effects of atypical antipsychotic medications. Some of the other psychotropic medications don't have all of those side effects. That really, that long list um covers all psychotropic medications, but um all of the atypicals have um have those side effects. So it's quite a long and pervasive list of short-term, but more concerningly in some ways, the the long-term side effects.
So I want to jump to something that you say in paragraph fifty of your statement, that the use of psychotropic medication for challenging behaviours aims to improve the behaviour by reducing excitation and aggression. But international guidelines clearly state there is limited evidence for the efficacy of that medication. And this raises concerns regarding over-prescription of medication for both children and adults. Can I ask you quite a blunt question? And that is, why is, why is psychotropic medication used at all if there is no compelling evidence of its efficacy and effectiveness?
To do what?
To um manage challenging behaviour.
So if we're talking, so it's a good question. Um, psychotropic medication for challenging behaviour um is is often families will will tell you, and there are studies that show that it can be helpful in the short term. We don't actually know the actual mechanisms of that. We think that it's probably through calming sedation, tranquilisation, whatever you want to call that. Um, but why is it prescribed is probably more about the fact that it's a treatment that's easily available to a doctor um and is a quick fix. I think the, I think that what gets lost in that process is that it's not treating the cause of the problem. Um, and a lot of the guidelines take into account the fact that certainly in the large-scale um studies, that there is, there is not compelling evidence that uh that psychotropic medication improves challenging behaviour. Um, there is some evidence that it reduces behaviour, particularly in the short term, um but also some in the long term as well. I think the guidelines, however, take into account the bigger picture, which is um which is thinking about the fact that the medication is not treating the cause. Um, but also the the costs of this medication in the long term for the person. And the the fact that, and that really comes through in their recommendations about it really should be a treatment of last resort.
And in your statement, towards the end of the statement, you deal with issues with prescribing psychotropic medication. So I want to take you to that part of your statement. It starts at paragraph eighty. But in particular, I wanted to ask you about the observations that you make around lifespan problem. And we've touched on this a a little bit a moment ago, paragraph eighty three. And I I wanted to ask you about the uh if it there's regular prescribing of psychotropic medication to cha- to deal with challenging behaviour. What does this mean in the long term about a person's capacity to communicate with uh anybody, their family, support workers or clinicians? And what does it mean about a person's capacity to be able to consent to the ongoing uh use of psychotropic medication?
I think some of, some of the issues that that raises, the first is that um if someone has prescribed medication, yet the underlying reasons for their behaviour in the first place are not understood. The person learns that nobody listens. The person learns that nobody listens and the behaviour continues. I think for people who've taken psychotropic medications for a long time, it becomes their normal. And it's only when they're taken off them that the person and the people around them can see the differences and the improvements in their mental state. And so, and that makes it difficult then around understanding for consent for ongoing treatment if you don't know what it was like before you were on it, I think. So that becomes a problem carried over of the people that we see. So I work with people aged 16 and over. By far, the vast majority that I see are already on psychotropic medications when they come to us. And so it's been commenced earlier in their life.
Is there a way of removing those medications? And how does that process of, I think what you describe as de-prescribing, this is paragraph 100 and following, what's that, what does that process involve?
De-prescribing is a process of gaining informed consent around the fact that perhaps someone's behaviours might be worse or they might develop problems when they come off medication, but also around a commitment to work together with the treating doctor to slowly reduce medication over time. It takes quite an amount of time and quite an amount of effort on everybody's part and is most successful when everyone is committed to reducing the medication.
The Royal Commission is likely to hear some evidence tomorrow from the experience in the UK and the suggestion being that there should be greater investment in de-prescribing clinics. So if the premise is that the use of psychotropic medication should be last resort, then investing in allowing a person to get to a point where their life can be lived without psychotropic medication requires a de-prescribing approach. Do you have any views about the idea of de-prescribing clinics? And if so, what would that involve for Australia?
Well, I think the, one of the, from a clinical perspective, I think it's important to consider de-prescribing in the context of everything else. And it's overly simplistic to think that it's just about going and seeing someone and coming off the medication. I think successful de-prescribing has to engage, and the studies on this area would suggest that engaging with carers and family and the people supporting the individual is equally, if not more important, than actually what happens with the medication. There's also engaging with the treating doctor around the reasons for doing it. Having said that, the studies really show that it is possible. From a clinical point of view, I would say that it does take time and it does, and it is most successful when you have enough time in a clinical context to understand the person and that there's an understanding around what their issues are and why they happen. But I think it sounds promising.
Now, I'm going to move to the suggestions for change and improvement. But before I do that, Commissioner Atkinson, I think you have a question before I move to the final part of the evidence.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, we passed the point, but if I can go back to it. I just wanted to talk about the rights of people with intellectual disability. So if they don't have a diagnosed mental illness, there's limited efficacy for prescribing psychotropic drugs. Is that correct?
The, I guess when we're talking about evidence and if we're talking about the weight of evidence in the published literature, that the international guidelines would still acknowledge that there is a limited amount of evidence into the efficacy of psychotropics. There are individual studies and trials that would argue for efficacy. And that's how some of these medications have been approved in some settings by the TGA in Australia. But I think that the overall reviews, such as those done by the Cochrane Collaboration or the sort of reviews and recommendations by the NICE organisation in the UK, would all suggest a fairly limited amount of evidence for their efficacy. And I guess that, the thing I have to explain there too is that if we're talking about intellectual disability and evidence, the fact that there is little research, you know, and limited evidence, limited evidence might could feasibly be because there hasn't been enough research or because it's actually ineffective. So that's the other issue there.
Thank you. But on the other hand, and I understand your answer and it's complex. But on the other hand, if a person with an intellectual disability or autism has a mental illness, then they have a right to have the correct prescription. And if that includes psychotropic drugs, then that is their right also to have that prescribed for them. It's not that because they have an intellectual disability, they should not be having these drugs.
No, that's, that's, that's correct. And I think that that is, and I think the best way to explain that is that these medications do treat mental illness. And that's the thing that they, you know, they treat the mental illness. But if we're talking about challenging behaviour, they don't treat the cause of the challenging behaviour. They're only managing the symptoms. And that would be the distinction, really. But yes.
I understand that. Thank you. Yes, Mrs.
So if we turn to the conclusions and suggestions for improvement, and this starts on page 28 of your statement. So it's your opinion that inappropriate and/or excessive prescribing of psychotropic medication for people with intellectual disability was once a hallmark of institutional abuse. I'm sorry, there's just some sound there. And you say it continues now and is symptomatic of a widespread lack of capacity in intellectual and developmental disability healthcare in Australia. And so your recommendation is the need for medical practitioners who lack understanding or haven't had education in this area to be aware of their lack of experience and knowledge and to be aware that that may place the practitioner in a situation where he or she is more vulnerable to the suggestion to the tick the right box to make the problem go away approach. What suggestion do you make to address that particular concern?
So I think the important thing to say and that some of the, I think one of Nicky Edwood's studies would say that doctors are aware, they are aware that they lack capacity. But what doctors say is that there are no services to refer anybody to and that they don't know how to do it either. And so I think that there's, that the solutions are not, are around better education for the medical profession, but also around access to specialised services for assistance in managing these really quite complex situations.
Now, we haven't touched on that part of your statement where you provide the Royal Commission with quite a lot of detail about the relevant regulatory arrangements, both in Queensland and what you've seen in terms of the rollout of the NDIS in Queensland. But if I'm looking at paragraph 105 and 106 of your statement, you do raise some concerns about those who do not qualify for NDIS support and whether the mainstream services lack capacity for that group. What suggestions do you make in terms of what you've observed about those who might be NDIS participants? But also a large number of people who might not be NDIS participants, but issues concerning prescribing of psychotropic drugs might arise for them?
And so I think that, you know, broadly, what I've tried to summarise is that there really have been quite significant reforms in the disability sector since the GADA inquiry in Queensland. And a much improved awareness in the disability sector around restrictive practice and chemical restraint and the issues with chemical restraint. But unfortunately, really, there have not really been very many at all improvements in the medical system or resources or the medical profession's understanding of any of these issues. And that affects NDIS participants as well as people who aren't NDIS participants. People who aren't NDIS participants but have a disability are at a greater disadvantage because they don't have the safeguarding that the NDIS has brought in with the NDIS rules.
And then the final point is about funding and research. And you express some concern that there has been a decrease in the resources and funding. And some of this might be related to a shift to the NDIS. But you wanted to make an observation about the importance of ongoing research, but properly funded research. And that's the final question that I wanted to ask you.
So I, we have certainly seen difficulties and loss of funding around Australia in a number of centres in relation to the NDIS rollout. I think that the, I think that the value of research and the value of academic centres looking at intellectual disability is immense in this area. And it's, it remains a very difficult situation to undertake research when there is no funding or little funding or funding that is threatened. And I think that really addressing this situation needs a comprehensive approach that is not just about increasing services, but also about looking at research, at data collection and at education. We need all of those things, really, I think, in order to effect change.
Dr Franklin, thank you very much for your time that you've given us to the Royal Commission today. Commissioners, that completes Dr Franklin's evidence.
Thank you. Dr Franklin, I just have one further question, if I may. In paragraph four, you describe yourself as a psychiatrist working in the subspecialty area of the psychiatry of young people and adults with intellectual and developmental disability. Is there any accreditation process to acquire or be recognised as having expertise in that subspecialty?
No, there is not currently. It is at the stage where there is a, within the Royal Australian New Zealand College of Psychiatrists, there is a section of intellectual and developmental disability, but that is joined by expressing interest. There is no particular training scheme, which we would like to develop and work on. Because we're really, as a psychiatrist, I firmly believe, having had some trainees before, that if we can give people the experience of working in a centre that works with people with intellectual disability and autism, that that is really the best way of building our workforce capacity. So in answer to your question, we do not have a training scheme or certificate at this stage. But we are trying to work towards one. It's difficult in that there are, there would need to be funding to provide training positions is one of the challenges.
Is there a particular proposal that has been formulated in order to address this issue of accreditation or training?
There's been preliminary work done by Professor Julian Trolle's group. And Professor Trolle's surveyed Australian psychiatrists looking to see if there would be capacity for having intellectual disability psychiatry trainees. And he's found that there would be capacity within services to accommodate them, but nothing around funding, unfortunately.
Well, if you think that there's a basis for a policy recommendation from a Royal Commission, then one way of seeing whether that might be done without taking that any further would be to put in a submission to explain what would be needed, how it might be done and how much it might cost.
Commissioners, can I just say that this will all be explored in a hearing that the Royal Commission proposes to conduct in December this year?
Even more so in that case. Dr Franklin, thank you very much for giving your evidence. I'll just check, is there anything more from Commissioner Atkinson?
Thank you very much for giving your evidence. I apologise for the little glitches we have had, but your evidence has been very helpful to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, could we adjourn now till 2pm?
Yes.
The Royal Commission. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Dr Bennett.
Commissioners, the next witness is Dr Manya Angli. She's giving her evidence from Adelaide.
Dr Angli, thank you very much for coming to give evidence. I will ask my associate to administer the affirmation if you would be good enough to follow her instructions. Thank you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Dr Angli. Dr Bennett will now ask you some questions. If by chance our IT systems have a little glitch, then we'll attempt to correct it as soon as possible, but we live in hope that all will be well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you please tell the Commission your full name?
My name is Manya Therese Angli.
And your professional address?
Number four, Gillies Road, Glen Osmond.
And Dr Angli, you've provided a statement for the Royal Commission dated the 5th of September 2020, is that right?
That's right.
And you've read a copy of that statement recently?
I have.
And are the contents of that statement true and correct?
They are.
Now, Commissioners, that statement is to be found in tender bundle A and it's at tab seven. And it's to be marked as exhibit 63. And in addition to that, there are three, there are four annexes. And they are to be found at exhibit, they are to be marked exhibit 631 to 4. And I tend to those documents.
Well, I can be admitted into evidence. Thank you, Dr Bennett.
Now, Dr Angli, do you have a copy of your statement with you?
I do.
Thank you. On the first page from paragraph four, you've set out your professional experience and your professional background. And you referred to your training as a pharmacist. Can you please tell the Royal Commission what goes into and what is involved with training as a pharmacist?
Well, I have been a teaching academic for 20 years and into the undergraduate program. There are various areas of study that are science-based. So pharmacists are trained as highly skilled scientists. But pharmacists are also trained as health professionals. So they have the usual skill set that a health professional has. So the sciences that pharmacists are knowledgeable in at the end of their undergraduate four-year training is in particular in chemistry, medicinal chemistry, pharmaceutical chemistry, biochemistry, microbiology, which enables them to understand the action of drugs and their effect in the body. But it also equips them to understand how the body handles the medications themselves. And that's largely the subject of pharmacokinetics. And in addition, there are the usual communication skills and also knowledge of all the disease states and the interplay between medicines and these disease states. So that's an undergraduate. And that is then followed by an intern year where all of that knowledge gets applied into practice.
Right. And when you say you're also trained to say and practise as a health professional, how do you make that as distinct from the scientific background? What are the skills that attach to that?
Well, all health professionals are trained in observing and gathering information
Well, uh all health professionals um are trained in observing and gathering information and then try and to make sense of it. So for a community pharmacist, that might be around people presenting at a community pharmacy with a symptom. And the community pharmacist in turn will be able to treat minor ailments or make an assessment of whether a patient needs to be referred. So there may or may not be a um a product that's recommended and advice given. And so that's one aspect of community pharmacy. And then there's also the um the area of dispensing medications, um which involves checking a prescription, looking for uh interactions with other medications the person might be taking. And also if there is any um issues regarding that person's medical history and the medications. And then it's ensuring that it's at the right dose and that how to take the medication is communicated to the patient, um informing them of any risks and side effects and informing them about what to expect and when to talk to their health professional if um there are any unexpected or problematic uh issues with the medication.
You also refer to um having some research experience and other clinical experience. Can you please tell the Commissioners something of your own background?
So um after I completed my intern year as a a graduate pharmacist at Flinders Medical Centre in Adelaide, I returned to the university as a junior academic. And I embarked on a higher degree and I completed a PhD part-time while working as a junior academic. Um and uh that was from nineteen ninety to two thousand and ten, apart from a period of parenting leave. And I worked as a uh teaching academic in the first instance and later became a full-time researcher because um I was able to uh become a self-funded researcher through achieving um success with grant applications. And then uh I moved from academia. I remained an adjunct senior research fellow. But I started my own um research and consulting business um where I have various endeavours which include undertaking research projects with various universities and organisations and I'm also an embedded general practice pharmacist. And I, in very recent years, have held contracts with a number of aged care facilities um in Adelaide where I do medication reviews and for residents in aged care homes and I also provide quality use of medicine services. And within my general practice work, I provide home medicine reviews. And I have a a special interest in providing um medication reviews uh to people with intellectual disability.
Right, and doctor, later on in your statement, you do refer to your work um doing the home medicine reviews. Now might be a good time for you to explain to the Commissioners what a home medicine review is and how you go about it.
So um to, I would just come back a bit. So uh I'm also credentialed as um a consultant pharmacist um to conduct medication reviews. So I did that uh credentialing um in two thousand and ten, or I completed it in two thousand and ten. Um and a home medicine review involves um receiving a referral from a medical practitioner. Until very recently, in April twenty twenty, um it was only a G P who could refer uh a patient to an accredited pharmacist to undertake a medication review. But since April, other medical practitioners such as psychiatrists and paediatricians and neurologists and other physician-based specialists can also do so. Um but it involves um being equipped with uh medical information and it will depend on what the reason for referral is. And you, the consultant pharmacist goes to a person's home and spends at least an hour with the patient. And in the first instance, they will reconcile the medication history of that patient to produce what's called a best possible medication history. So it's the most accurate current comprehensive medication list. And from there, they will um gather information that will enable that consultant pharmacist to marry with the information that's available from the referrer, or if, in my case, I have full access to case notes through the practice I work in and in my aged care facilities that I service, I will incorporate all that information and produce a report for the G P um or other prescriber. Uh and I will produce a draft medication management plan which will include various observations, suggestions and recommendations to optimise medication use. And it will also include some information around diet, lifestyle, mood, bowels, continents, whatever is relevant to that scenario. Um and in turn, the referrer um reviews that information and discusses it with the patient or their substitute decision-maker. Um or both, and they finalise the medication management plan. Which could be changes in doses, de-prescribing, as Dr Franklin referred to. Um it could include recommendations for monitoring. So uh in the case of antipsychotics, it might be monitoring uh blood tests or weight, um et cetera, blood pressure. Um and a monitoring plan may be included. So it's a very comprehensive service. Um and plays a a very important role in team care.
Right, so you've told the commission that you go into the home of the person, for example, with an intellectual disability. And you have various sources of information that you're taking at the time. Do you speak to the person with the intellectual disability also as part of that process?
Wherever possible, yes, definitely. So um there may be some situations where it's inappropriate, but I would always um attempt to engage with that person and communicate with them using whatever is their uh communication um medium. But it also involves talking with uh family or support workers um or any other key people involved in that person's care. And it will be different for every situation, so you adapt it to meet the needs of that person. So it's very much person-centred, a person-centred service. And it's in their own home, which has a lot of advantages for a person with intellectual disability because going to a medical appointment and waiting and being surrounded by um sensory overload can be quite distressing.
And is there other information about the environment of the person with the intellectual disability that might assist you in the analysis you have to do?
Absolutely. So a key role is observing uh for anything that might be relevant to that situation. So in some instances, you would be observing uh for weight gain. You could be observing for mood. You could um be observing for level of functioning. Um in particular, um we would be observing for capacity to manage their medicines or to look at systems in place uh to identify if there are any improvements that could be made to optimise medication management. And medication management in that context is um ensuring that the medication is taken as intended by the prescriber. So adherence is one word that we would use. Um it would also be looking to see that the person is able to consume that medicine. So there may be someone who has an aversion to certain tastes or textures. And if that was problematic, you would be looking to problem solve how that medication could be could be guaranteed to be ingested if it was appropriate. But in the issue of chemical restraint, there would be a a series of questions that I would ask to ensure that the chemical restraint was being administered as intended by the prescriber or as should be intended um according to state legislation and uh national guidelines.
Right, thank you. From paragraph twenty-one of your statement, Dr Angli, and that's at page eight, you set out the regulatory framework of medicine use in Australia. And at paragraph twenty-one, you refer to the National Medicines Policy. Can you explain the role of that policy in terms of the the regulation of medicines in Australia?
So briefly, um the National Medicines Policy has four arms or four pillars. Um so uh the first uh pillar is around um safety, quality and efficacy. The second pillar is around um equity of access. So ensuring that regardless of one's um socio-economic status, they have access to medicines that are safe and effective. Um the third um pillar is quality use of medicines, and that is about judicious or appropriate use of medicines. And the fourth pillar is a viable pharmaceutical industry.
Right, um that relates to a question I have at paragraph twenty-two. You've talked about the central objective of that policy and then you say this includes minimising the misuse and overuse of medicines and using non-pharmacological strategies whenever possible. Can I ask you to address both those things in relation to what it is the the policy says? So firstly, the issue of minimising the misuse and overuse of medicines.
Um so misuse of medicines is when um medicines are not prescribed consistently with current guidelines, but it can also be um substance abuse. So there's many interpretations of um misuse. So the opposite of misuse is when a medicine is prescribed for the right patient, for the right indication at the right dose, for the right period of time. So misuse is anything that counters uh that. Um and similarly, overuse is when uh medicines are prescribed for prolonged periods, when they're prescribed at um high doses and when they're used for indications that are inappropriate. And so there's some overlap between misuse and overuse. Um and in the context of psychotropics and intellectual disability, um I strongly believe that psychotropics are both overused and misused.
Right, a- and I'll come back to that later, Dr Angli. But before I do, just ask you again, you've referred to the the using non-pharmacological strategies whenever possible. What are you referring to there?
Um well, it's already been alluded to this morning, but it's about having um a behaviour support plan that is person-centred. Um and that will be developed by professionals with expertise in that area, whether it's an occupational therapist or a um developmental disability um education specialist. And and it's a programme that meets a person's needs uh to uh reduce any um exacerbation of uh challenging behaviours. So I have also done some work in that space around um uh whilst I was a researcher at the university, around um the relationship between sensory processing disturbance and behaviour. And many of the interventions that are used then many of the non-pharmacological interventions that are used are sensory-based um and can be highly effective depending on the person's um sensory needs. But there is quite strong um and compelling uh evidence emerging that sensory interventions um can be effective for managing challenging behaviours. So other things are also very useful in managing challenging behaviours. And I could elaborate, but exercise, nature, et cetera. So it's all about patient-centred uh approaches to develop the best um behaviour support plan.
Thank you. Now, in your statement, you then go on to um give some evidence about the therapeutic goods administration and that regulatory regime. Now, I know it's a big, big topic, and I'm going to ask you, can you very briefly say something about the role of the therapeutic goods administration?
So the therapeutic goods administration falls under the um National Medicines Policy umbrella. And for a medication to become registered with the therapeutic goods administration or the T G A, it has to meet certain standards for safety, quality and efficacy. Um and if it meets those standards, it becomes um registered or it's given approval um for the treatment of certain indications that are then listed in the product information for that medication. But there's another step whereby for uh once a per- once a medication has T G A approval, uh it then um can, or a sponsor or drug company can apply um for it to be listed on the pharmaceutical benefit scheme where it then is subsidised. And in that instance, in addition to safety, quality and um efficacy uh cost effectiveness um comes into play. And um the uh comparisons are made with existing um therapies. So um uh so comparatively with respect to efficacy and safety with other agents.
Right. What you've also said following that at paragraph twenty-nine is that prescribing a medicine is considered to be appropriate if it's evidence-based. And you've referred to um evidence-based of prescribing of medicine elsewhere. What do you mean by evidence-based?
Um evidence-based is when there are well-designed, well-powered, randomised control trials that um demonstrate efficacy. So uh if you're looking at evidence-based for efficacy, that is. So um for example, risperidone is an antipsychotic, which is one of the psychotropics um that has been shown in randomised control trials to have efficacy for management of um challenging behaviours in people with autism. So it's the only antipsychotic that has T G A approval and is PBS listed for management of behaviour in autism. And it also has um approval and is listed for management of behaviour uh in people with intellectual disability. So it's evidence-based means there's evidence from high-quality randomised control trials.
Right, um so you've said that the T G A will have regard to evidence-based medicine in relation to their regulatory system. And you've also referred to the prescribing of medicine. In that respect, how is it that um prescribers, so doctors who are writing prescriptions, how is it that they have access to that type of data?
Um, well, so prescribers um would access that type of information in um consensus um or evidence-based guidelines. So in Australia, um the key resources are the therapeutic guidelines. Um and the Australian Medicines Handbook um is uh the uh probably the key resource that's used for prescribers and pharmacists and other health professionals like nurses. And then there are other various international guidelines that have been referred to earlier today, such as the NICE guidelines from the UK.
Right. At paragraph thirty-two, you say, a registered medicine can be legally prescribed for the treatment of a condition. treatment of a condition that is not in- included in the product information." This is referred to as off-label prescribing. Can you please explain to the commissioners what that means?
Well, off-label prescribing is not illegal, uh, but it needs to be carefully considered, uh, with respect to evidence and safety by the prescriber before, um, they write their prescription. In addition, there is a responsibility to inform the patient or and/or their substitute decision-maker that the medicine doesn't have approval for use in that particular condition. And they also have a responsibility to monitor, um, outcomes with respect to efficacy and adverse effects and, as per usual, to undertake any monitoring, um, that is required. So it's not illegal, um, but it should be done, um, carefully and cautiously and certainly with informed consent of the patient.
You also say that at paragraph thirty-three, that while the PBS is primarily a mechanism for subsidising medicines, um, it also has a role in guiding the judicious, um, prescribing of medicines. Can you explain how that happens?
Um, that happens because if a medicine is prescribed off-label, um, then it's not subsidised by the PBS and the patient will have to pay, um, full cost for that medication. So that then encourages the prescriber to go down the pathway of prescribing first-line, um, or, um, trying to justify prescribing that medication because of, say, a mental health, um, condition. Um, and it's, it's a difficult, um, it, it, it can be difficult to distinctly identify specific mental health conditions in people with intellectual disability. So it's harder than, I gather, I'm not a diagnoser, but, um, I gather it's much more complex than in people without intellectual disability.
Do you come across, do you come across cases where off-label prescribing is used in order to, um, control what is thought to be challenging behaviour?
Yes, I do.
How does, can you give us some idea of when that happens and how it happens?
Um, well, I've submitted some case studies, um, or I, I think that they've been redacted, but I do describe, um, three case studies where that happens.
I'm not so much concerned about the details of case studies.
Yes.
As in general, how, how does this happen?
In general, um, it happens when first-line agents have been trialled and have been unsuccessful. So good-
Sorry, unsuccessful in doing what?
In managing behaviour. So for example, a person presents with challenging behaviour, risperidone, which has TGA approval and is PBS subsidised, will be trialled. So if that doesn't work at the recommended doses, the dose might get pushed up to antipsychotic doses. Um, if that fails, then they might change to an agent like arapiprazole, which is also an antipsychotic, which actually has FDA approval in the United States. And there is some evidence of benefit in managing behaviour. So that might be tried next. If that is not successful, then the prescriber might go to alanzapine, which has no evidence for benefit in challenging behaviour, but they'll give it a go. So that is the scenario that I most often encounter.
So in that last case, that drug is not on the PBS, so someone will have to pay full price?
Well, i- if they obtain that prescription from a public hospital, um, they won't have to pay full price, they will just pay the usual, um, PBS prices. But if they obtain it in the community, yes, they're willing to pay full price.
To get it from a public hospital, they would have to be an inpatient, would they not?
Absolutely, yes, yep. Uh, not an inpatient, but, um, uh, an inpatient or an outpatient. So they would need to be seeing a doctor within the hospital.
Thank you.
May I ask about that second drug you mentioned? Is that an example of off-label prescribing because it has FDA approval but not TGA approval?
Uh, yes, that is an example of off-label prescribing.
Thank you.
But it's a grey area because the evidence, well, it's not, it's not grey whether it's off-label or not, there is actually some evidence for benefit. So it's a reasonable choice for a second-line agent.
Thank you.
Um, Dr Angley, going to paragraph thirty-six of your statement. Now, you've heard, it sounded, you've listened in to, um, Dr Franklin's evidence earlier today, and she did talk, um, referred to psychotropic medications and the sort of classes of them being antidepressants, anti-elixxics and antipsychotics. Did you agree with the description that Dr Franklin gave earlier?
Yes.
Um, I think some reference was also made to anticonvulsants, and you've referred to them in your statement also. What role does anti, uh, and do anticonvulsants play with people with intellectual disabilities?
Um, well, I think their role is limited. Um, they are indicated for bipolar disorder. The evidence for benefit in managing behaviour is scant, but they are prescribed for that purpose.
Okay. Um, at paragraph thirty-seven, you refer to psychotropic medications and you talk about appropriate use and inappropriate use and prescribing. And you conclude with the view that as a result of inappropriate prescribing and/or administration of psychotropic medication, then you say, "As a form of chemical restraint in people with intellectual disability, that it may constitute a form of abuse and neglect." Now, what is your reasoning to, um, get to that view of the neglect and the abuse?
Well, my reasoning for that view is that if they are prescribed and it's not as an absolute last resort, then that person has been denied their right to have proper intervention and care. Um, I also think if they are prescribed medicines that don't have evidence for benefit and they are solely being prescribed because of their tranquilising effects or their sedative effects, rather than addressing the underlying problems as Dr Franklin referred to, um, then that is abuse. And it's neglecting to give them the proper care that they are entitled to as human beings.
Thank you.
You, you've said, I think, if I can ask a question, earlier on, that as part of your home medicines review, you encounter cases where people with intellectual disability or autism have been prescribed medications, and I think this was your term, as chemical restraint. Uh, is it part of your role to determine whether in those cases, the chemical restraints may constitute a form of abuse or neglect?
Um, our, as, my role as a consultant pharmacist, my duty of care is to gather information and make suggestions and recommendations. Um, my role is not to change prescribing. The, so I just want to make that quite clear. So I'm not a diagnoser and I'm not a prescriber. But my role, or the potential role of all pharmacists in this, um, scenario, um, is gathering information. The, the, the guidelines, the framework around chemical restraint is pretty clear. So, um, if a psychotropic is prescribed for an indication that is not in the list of medical conditions, so it is being used to control behaviour, then that is chemical restraint. So that's just an academic exercise. Um, so I do believe it's our role to identify it and then to make suggestions and recommendations around prescribing.
I don't want you to talk about, I don't want you to talk about individual cases, but I would infer from what you've said that you are likely to have come across cases where you have formed the view that the psychotropic drug that has been prescribed, has been prescribed in circumstances that you yourself would regard as either neglect or abuse. Would I be right in inferring that?
Um, I certainly have seen scenarios where I strongly believe it is ni- neglect and/or abuse. However, I don't always have all the information to hand around diagnoses and I can only work on the information available.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand, and please don't take my questions to be critical of anything you have or haven't done. I'm just interested that if it is not the role of the, uh, expert pharmacist conducting a home medicine review to report these cases which appear to be neglect or abuse, how would anyone find out about it?
Well, I think that's a very good question. And I think that, uh, consultant pharmacists, like myself, need to be empowered to call it out and report it. I mean, we are trained in mandatory reporting for other aspects of abuse and neglect. And formally, it should be extended to chemical restraint.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Dr Angley, on your page thirteen from paragraph forty, you, you give some evidence of the adverse effects of psychotropic medications. Um, just can you briefly say something again about your training as a pharmacist in identifying adverse events? And then again, you do have a long list that you've given the, um, the commission and it's here in your statement, but just say something briefly about the more common, um, adverse events and their impact on the individual.
Sure. Um, so as I alluded to earlier, pharmacists are trained as scientists. So we do extensive studies in biochemistry. And so we are well-positioned to interpret, um, laboratory tests in the context of the medicine prescribed and the person's medical conditions. Um, so the adverse effects associated, um, and I'm going to talk about antipsychotics because they are the most risky psychotropics and they're the ones I've listed in great detail in my statement. So, um, because I'm sure it's in everyone's mind, I will firstly highlight, um, neuroleptic malignant syndrome, which, um, Ms McGowan outlined was, um, the side effect of the antipsychotic alanzapine that resulted in Oliver's untimely death. And that has been well-described by Ms McGowan. So other adverse effects that can occur with antipsychotics are weight gain and other metabolic effects such as, um, the dyslipidemia or, um, cholesterol and other lipid issues. Um, weight gain, um, can lead to, uh, metabolic syndrome, diabetes, um, and together, uh, that can increase cardiovascular risk, which means increases, increases the risk of having a heart attack or a stroke. Um, other adverse effects are direct to the heart, where you can get, um, abnormal heart rhythms that can, um, lead to death. Um, hyperprolactinemia is an adverse effect, so that's the breastfeeding hormone, that can lead to all sorts of problems, um, such as, uh, breast enlargement and breasts producing milk in both men and women. It can lead to disturbances in sexual function. Um, it can also lead to amenorrhea, so, um, period-stopping in females. It can interfere with, um, growth in, uh, children who haven't, um, fully matured. Other abnormalities are blood issues, so, um, blood cell changes, um, in particular white cell changes, um, liver problems, um, and other adverse effects, which was, which were also described by Ms McGowan, are extraperimetal side effects. So Oliver experienced oculo-chiaric crisis, which, um, is an example of an extraperimetal side effect. You can get something called achisphisia, which is an inner restlessness or agitation. Um, you can get high blood pressure, you can get low blood pressure, um, and you can get, um, electrolyte abnormalities such as hyponatremia, which can impact on cognition, um, and also increase the risk of cardiac arrhythmia, abnormal rhythm.
Thank you, doctor. Now, I'm just needing to keep an eye on the time, Dr Angley, so I'm going to ask you to go to pa- um, page thirty-two of your statement. And from the bottom of page thirty-two, you've given three, um, examples, de-identified examples of cases that, um, you, you came across in your home medicine reviews. Um, the first one, who was referred to as Alex in, um, senior council's opening, um, is your patient one. And could you please give a summary of what it is you identified and what you see as being some of the main issues that that particular case highlights?
Um, so, um, Alex was actually patient two. Um, so shall I talk about patient one or?
Well, no, I think maybe, maybe go to patient two.
Go to patient two.
Yes, and that's from paragraph ninety-three.
Yes, certainly, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Uh, so, um, this was a young, uh, man, um, who I saw in a regional area, and he was referred to me via, um, a GP in his, um, town, which was triggered by his mother. And he, he was living in a, um, not a group home because he lived by himself, um, but he had a behavioural support plan and a senior psychologist was concerned about chemical restraint. So together with his mother, the referral was triggered. And this is an extreme, um, situation. So arguably the worst or the most extreme medication review I've conducted where he was, um, he had autism, intellectual disability and a diagnosis of bipolar disorder. He was prescribed an anticonvulsant, sodium valproate, which is appropriate for bipolar disorder. He was also prescribed a, two antipsychotics. One, um, at the time had approval for mania in bipolar disorder that has since changed. Um, so would be reasonable to use it now, um, according to guidelines, but it was prescribed at twice the maximum dose for psychosis. He was also prescribed another antipsychotic, which had no evidence, has no evidence in autism or bipolar, it doesn't have TGA approval, and that was prescribed at one and a half times the dose, the maximum dose used for psychosis. He was also prescribed another antipsychotic, alanzapine, the same one that- He was also prescribed another antipsychotic, alanzapine, the same one that um Oliver was prescribed. On a when required basis, up to three times a day. And each one of those doses was the maximum dose used for psychosis. So he was prescribed two regular antipsychotics and a PRN antipsychotic at up to three times. Usual dose for psychosis. His support workers told me that he was. Not improving in any way with respect to his behaviour. In fact, his behaviour was worsening. Despite the escalating doses. He was also prescribed. An anticholinergic agent called benzotropine. And which is intended to be prescribed when required, but he was prescribed that continually. And that agent can mask the development of. These abnormal movement side effects that can occur. That can become irreversible. And they're like Parkinsonian type movement disorders and they're very distressing and disturbing. And and they have a lot of stigma associated with them. So he um was also prescribed a benzodiazepine um in very high doses, but that was just for. Um sedation for medical procedures. But the issue here was that he was prescribed. Two regular antipsychotics. A third one on a when required basis and none of it was working. So and his mother had been told there was only one psychiatrist. Who went to that regional area and that was the only option. And so my role was really to identify chemical restraint and to um. Facilitate a pathway for him to see another psychiatrist who was employed by government. Agency um and for that to occur in a timely manner and to. Uh be fully assessed by the psychiatrist and then embark on a deep prescribing program.
Right, and that is, that is the type of recommendation you would make in those HMRs?
Uh yes, yeah. So as I said, that was an extreme case. And but it's the same type of process and that I would go through plus. And I also take the opportunity to. I guess. And highlight to the prescriber or gather information for. The new psychiatrist that would inform the pathway ahead, so. And I perused his case notes um at the local state-based disability. Provider and incorporate other information such as the behaviour management plan that was developed by the senior psychologist. And and did my own observations regarding his sensory needs and his likes and dislikes to make it. A very person-centered um report.
You, you would have regarded this as a case of abuse, would you not?
In this case, I, I would regard it as abuse, yes.
Um I'm just going to take you to the end of your evidence, um Dr Angley, because we're running out of time here. And very helpfully, you've provided from page forty one, some of your conclusions and suggestions for change. Um but just i- in addition to the, the many number you've got there. At paragraph one hundred and twenty five, you say. Overall, there's a lack of Australian data regarding psychotropic medicine used in people with intellectual disability. For example, the effect of psychotropics, I mean antipsychotics on long-term cognition. When they're commenced in young people and you say they're unknown and I think you referred to. Um Alex as being somebody who'd been on medication for a very long time. Is it the case there's currently no way to identify this type of information?
No, there's currently no way to identify that information because intellectual disability isn't coded. And there's no way of working out. And which patients are getting psychotropics and for how long? And I think that. Uh Alex had been prescribed an antipsychotic from the age of four, so he'd initially been prescribed. Thyridazine, which has since been uh discontinued. And in Australia, it was voluntarily withdrawn by the drug company because of uh life-threatening cardiac arrhythmias. And from the age of four, for his lifespan. And inevitably that will um. Uh lead to premature death. So Alex had a positive family history of cardiac disease, so he's been prescribed. Very high doses of antipsychotics in combination, all of which can increase cardiovascular risk. So generally, the rule of thumb is for antipsychotics when they're prescribed for. Management of challenging behaviour to be used at the lowest possible dose for the shortest possible time. So we know, we have data in dementia patients. So. We have data that shows that antipsychotics in people with dementia. Increases the risk of um TIA, stroke and death. And it also shows that increases, they increase falls and they increase the risk of pneumonia. And I expect if, if we could. Uh have that data to hand, we would find at least. Those same problems in people with intellectual disability. And of course, people with intellectual disability. Young people commenced on antipsychotics, become old people with intellectual disability. And so why would we expect anything different? And the earlier these medications are prescribed in people, the longer they're on them. When they're prescribed early, they've got a lot of living to do and there's a lot of harm that can um be uh made.
Right, and, and so finally, I'm just taking up one of these suggestions or comments from um Commissioner Sackville. At the moment, you could go into somebody's home, do a home medicine review, you could write a detailed account. And you could send it back to the referrer. And at the moment, despite all of your concerns and worries. Um and your alarm bells ri- um ringing, that could actually be filed away in. And you have no way of knowing whether it's been acted upon or not.
And well, and until, well, the business rules around home medicine reviews. And and the same service in aged care says that there has to be an interaction. Between the consultant pharmacist and the GP. And that doesn't always take place. And but for claiming purposes, it should take place. It can be by phone or email. And but sometimes. There's no response. And from April twenty twenty, and. A consultant pharmacist can now do up to two follow-ups. So they will identify following the initial review, whether a follow-up or. Possibly two is warranted, but it will depend on the medication management plan that is produced by the referrer. So that is a driver for the medication management plan to be communicated to the consultant pharmacist. And those two follow-ups also offer an opportunity. To assist with implementation of a deep prescribing plan or. And an opportunity to ensure that monitoring is undertaken, for example, with respect to. Uh weight, blood tests, et cetera, for antipsychotics. So since April twenty twenty, which is a result of the recommendations from the. Interim report from the Royal Commission into aged care, there's been a vast improvement.
Um thank you, um Dr Angley. That completes Dr Angley's evidence.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Atkinson? No, thank you very much, Dr Angley, for coming, giving your evidence. Uh we appreciate your assistance very much. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Ms Eastman, do we presume?
Commissioners, the next witness has prepared some pre-recorded evidence which lasts for about fifteen minutes. So the next witness is Raylene Griffiths. And this part of the pre-recorded evidence I'll ask you to receive and mark as exhibit six point four. And Ms Griffiths has recorded her evidence with me. And she was accompanied by David Briggs, who's a support worker. Uh so I'll ask for that evidence to be played now.
So coming to the Royal Commission now to talk to us is Raylene Griffiths and you can see her on the screen. So I'm going to start by just confirming that you are Raylene Griffiths.
Yes.
And do you promise that the matters that you'll talk about today, that you'll tell the truth to the Royal Commission?
Yes, I do want to tell the truth to the Royal Commission.
Thank you. So would you like me to call you Ms Griffiths or Raylene? What's your?
Raylene is fine, thanks, Raylene, it's fine. Thank you.
So Raylene, can I start by asking about you?
Yes, you can. Oh, and and I'm to respond to you right now?
Yes, please.
Um I have a talent for advocating for people's human rights. I love to do cooking. I have friendships that I like. I love my Christian religion and I have lived experience of schizophrenia.
And you are a project worker at CID. What do you do in that job?
Um well, I advocate for people's human rights once again and they live in group homes. And I'm prov- prov- produce easily documents in the future. To help them to understand their rights and to, for them to make their choices.
So Raylene, I want to ask you about where you live and your current home. Can I ask you about your home?
Yes, you can.
What would you like to tell us about your home?
I live in a group home in Wollongong area with five other people. And I am an independent person, independent is what I just said. I go around on buses and trains. I have a good social life and I go to church. I do my own work on my computer and the people at the. Where I live respect me as a person.
So where, where do you live now?
Victory South Coast area, the group home as I said.
Do you want to tell us about your home?
Um sometimes in group homes, I find it difficult because of my mental health issues. I sometimes think people are talking about me or they don't like me. Um don't want to be my friend. And the workers help me not to take it personally. My psychiatrist is helping me. His name, I won't mention names, beg your pardon, I understand it.
That's okay.
I use quite time in myself and self-searching to decode any difficulties or conflicts in the house.
And what do you like about where you live now?
Good support, good attitudes, um workers bring a sense of humour to the workplace. And workers bring good feelings about everyone if they can. Our workers help me with my personal things or problems. They listen to me. They like to give me work, give my, I like to give my workers compliments, which is what I do for them. Um they spend time to get to know me and build a relationship. And the meals are generous because I cook once a week and I know about it.
What, what's your favourite thing to cook?
I love apricot chicken or I love, the other night it was. Stir-fried noodles and vegetables, yes.
It sounds pretty good.
Yes.
So, so I wanted to ask you about your past home. And you've lived somewhere else before you moved to the Wollongong area. So can I ask you about living in another group home?
Yes, you can.
And how long did you live in that, that group home?
Two years approximately.
And how many people did you live with?
Four other ladies.
And in that group home, did people come to help you in the group home?
Yes, um there's always at least two staff members at a time in the house. Um there was an overnight worker all the time. It's, you know, approximately nine till the next morning or something overnight. That where they got those beds in the office there.
Yeah. And can you tell us about how they helped out in your old home?
They took me to the appointments that I needed to go to. Uh they helped me with, they call it healthcare reports, which is an HCA, HCR report. And they allowed me to cook some meals. And I also washed up, cleaned, you know. And also most of the staff were sympathetic to me when we had problems in the house. And they gave me moral support.
So you've just mentioned there about having problems in the house. And sometimes you did have some problems in that house, didn't you?
Yes, that's correct.
And sometimes you felt that you were bullied or ignored at that house?
Uh yes, one of the ladies who lives there with me had an intellectual disability. I wanted to have a friendship with her, but she didn't ignore me very much. And one time she locked me out the hell, many, sorry, many times she locked me out the house. She hit me once, she was an angry young woman. And the staff told me she was jealous of me because I had a good relationship with people. And I was fearing the consequences of living there.
What did the staff tell you? Did they help you at all?
Um the staff told me I wasn't able to make friendships if I'm looking for that. I asked the staff to help her to learn, to be kind to others. But and I left on good terms with some people, but not all people.
And sometimes in the old home, some people were aggressive towards you. What happened?
Yes, they do. Um one lady hit me one day. Um when we were going for a picnic to Kaiamo. Um I didn't understand why she did it because she's not, normally not that aggressive to me, her. The person who I first knew is the main person who bullied me to my, as to my belly. And the one, the other lady who lived there, she. Um as I said, she sort of hit me one day. First person also hit me one day, a little bit on the buttocks. And I was thinking to myself, I couldn't make friends anymore. I felt so helpless, eh? There was a lot of tension in the house. Um I spoke to a worker and my sister to help me to relate to the problem people. Or people who I thought were causing me distress. And I put a lot of effort but felt I was going nowhere. For example, I am. I used, I had like um. I, I used to get taxis home because I couldn't walk home because I was anxious. I came home thinking I didn't want to be there, that I was going to put myself in my room and didn't want to come out.
It made you pretty upset, some of those events, didn't it?
Yes, Kate, it did. And being judged, being treated badly, bullied, manipulation, anxiety. I felt very bad that I had, I, I said this already. I started to get taxis instead of using just buses because I was worried. I kept thinking it was my fault.
What, what helped you when you felt upset?
I would ask the workers to speak to me about the problem. Um I tried to go out. Um. I worked as a peer mentor as well as a peer to two different organisations. Um I tried to stay away as much as possible from home. I felt trapped and bad when I was there.
And did you ask anybody for help?
Yes, I asked people to help.
So who, who did you ask?
I asked my mother and my sister and the staff, the first house. Um I spoke to management. Um two different area managers and a manager. And I started to take notes of all the problems. And Da- David Briggs, David here, has received that document that I made out. In my own words from notes I took when I was in the house two years ago. Um I also contacted the New South Wales Department Office. The lady there told me that I didn't deserve this sort of behaviour.
And how did, how did all of these people help you? Did they help you?
Yes, in the long term. Um...
What did they do?
Okay. Um, oh, yes, yes, thank you. The company helped me to be a peer mentor. I got the job and helped people know about their human rights because I had experienced that sort of bullying or prejudice or what have you.
So, so based on your experience, how do you think people should try to work out their problems?
Yes, um, education and training is the key. Um, get the management to help people to better live together, give people choice about where they want to live and who they want to live with. Um, match, match people to live together who are more suited to living together, like different backgrounds, interests, um, problems, not seeing eye to eye, making them feel welcome in their house so that we can experience a peace and quiet in the house we live in.
So can I change topics now and ask you about doctors? So can I ask you about seeing doctors?
Yes, you can.
So you have seen a few doctors in your life, is that right?
Yes, I see a psychiatrist in Wollongong. I talk to the mental health team when I have anxiety problems. I see a psychologist. I also see a lady GP who's very good. I get MDRS funding for the psychologists professionals as well.
And how do, uh, these doctors and psychologists, how do they help you when you're upset or you're anxious?
Um, they give me choices and strategies to work through, uh, sensory activities and all. Um, I talk to them about how I am feeling.
And do you ever talk to the doctors about taking medication?
Yes, the psychiatrist talks to me about it. Yes. Um, I recently changed my medication. It seems to make me feel better. Um, but I still have problems with bad thoughts and voices, but I think I'm getting somewhere with it.
And have you had any problems with taking medications?
Yes, Helen, okay. Um, certainly. Yeah, one, yes, one of the workers asked me why I was taking so much medication at night. We talked to the doctor about it, changed the times when I took the medication. So that made me feel better. Um, sometimes when I'm, yeah, sometimes when I am, um... Late at night I tend to have, I eat things and now they've got me on less food and it's a little bit more of a hot milk at night or something because then weight gain is a problem, medication, yes. So they've given me strategies to cope with it.
And have you talked to your doctors about how the medicines are working for you? Do the doctors explain how the medications work?
Yes, I talk to the psychiatrist and...
Does that help you?
Excuse me, I was going to get the next page, please, Kate.
Okay.
Yes, um...
Right, so... So the last question I wanted to ask you is, what else would you like to tell the Royal Commission? Is there anything else you'd like to tell the Royal Commission about what you think would make things better for people with intellectual disability who live in group homes?
Um, workers to have good and sound training, um, be upfront and honest about things, easy read for the people in group homes about what is acceptable, have a phone number or to speak to someone about the situations that are happening, for example, lifeline or mental health team. Rehabilitation, people who have trauma, um, giving them self-esteem or self-esteem or skills, yes, thank you, thank you, um, David, yeah, in the group home and behavioural supports for people in the group homes.
Raylene, thank you very much for your time and sharing your experiences with us and the Royal Commission today. And thank you also to David, who has supported you in giving your evidence today. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you so much.
I know Ms Griffiths can't hear us at the moment, but I'd like to place on record our thanks for Ms Griffiths being prepared to give the evidence and to talk to our senior commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioners. There's one final witness this afternoon, ABF. Perhaps if we can have a short break of 10 minutes or so and then we'll complete her evidence.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.
The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Miss Eastman.
Commissioner, the final witness today is ABF and she has a pseudonym. And she is appearing in Sydney at the offices of her counsel, Mr Ben Fogarty. So first we just need to take ABF's oath.
Well, should we take an appearance first, I think perhaps? Um, yes.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much for that and thank you very much for coming to give evidence. Miss Eastman will now ask you some questions.
Commissioner, the copy of ABF's statement can be found in the tender bundle behind tab 15. And could I ask you to mark the statement exhibit five, sorry, six point five?
Yes, thank you.
So you are ABF and you've provided your name and address to the Royal Commission and you've made a statement dated the ninth of September. Can I ask you whether the statement is true? It is. Now, I'm going to start by asking you some questions and working through a little part of the beginning of your statements. You tell the Royal Commission in your statement a little bit about yourself. So you're married, you've been married for seven years and you have two daughters. I do. And you have some family circumstances that you wanted to tell the Royal Commission about. So you have a mum and a dad and you have two siblings, is that right? Yes. And your mother has a mild intellectual disability. She does. And both your parents have a cult, a culturally diverse background, is that right? I'm trying to avoid the particular things to identify. And English is your father's second language. It is. Your dad was a very hardworking man up until his retirement in 2014. Yes. And post-retirement, he planned on looking after your brother, but that didn't eventuate and we're going to touch on that shortly. But your sister, who also has a mild intellectual disability, she continues to live with your parents, is that right? That's right. And the evidence that you want to give to the Royal Commission this afternoon is to share your experiences and be a voice for your brother who you are concerned may be silenced. And you want to talk about his experiences and speak on his behalf in that context, is that right? I do. And we've given him a pseudonym, ABG, and he's your little brother, isn't he? And what would you like to tell us about your little brother? My little brother is, in his heart, just a person that absolutely loves people. He's super friendly. He builds attachments with people and when he does, he's just the most loyal person you'll ever meet. He never forgets someone that has been good to him. He's kept certain people that he was fond of in memory for over 20 years. He knows people by their cars, their shoes, their clothing. And he's just, has a real sweet innocence about him. And over his life, he's had a number of health problems. And when he lived at home with your parents, then he went to see the GP from time to time and your parents accompanied him to the GP. And he had a good relationship with his GP, is that right? Yes, that's right. It was a familiar person, familiar to the family. My brother doesn't vocalise, or he has the set vocalisations. So it's really obvious through his non-verbal language when he likes someone, yeah. And he was in the care of a paediatrician when he was a child and now he's an adult, he's under the care of a psychiatrist, is that right? That's correct. Now, in your statement, you talk about your brother as having some behaviours that you say can be characterised as challenging. And this might involve loud vocalisations, grabbing, tapping and sometimes hitting people for attention. And these behaviours have been part of who he is as a person, is that right? Yes, they've really evolved. So when he was younger, he might have thrown items in protest, but more recently, we have seen new behaviours emerge in order to gain attention. And so some of the triggers for the behaviours might be changes in his daily routine, if something unexpected happens, or if he sees a member of his own family who might be in distress. Correct. And sometimes the behaviours come out if he is feeling discomfort or pain. So there might be an issue that's raised about his health and the way in which he communicates his discomfort or pain is through his behaviour, is that right? Absolutely. He has no other way of telling someone that he's hurting. And you have a very close relationship with your brother. Yes. And over the time that you've both lived with him and known him, you've learnt how to understand his behaviour as a form of communication. Yes. And you've also watched other people engage with your brother who haven't necessarily understood that some of his behaviours are a form of communication, is that right? Correct. I think a lot of people find it hard to look past his disabilities and the behaviours he displays. Right. So I want to ask you a few questions about some events in your brother's life that have seen him move from your parents' home into different accommodation and what some of the experiences are that you've observed as your brother's made his way through different forms of accommodation. So in 2013, your brother was given a diagnosis of bipolar disorder, is that right? Yes, thereabouts, yes. And you were doing your best to support him and your family, but this is at a time when you had very small children yourself, you were working and undertaking studies. And so you did your best to help, but often you were called in to deal with really critical or crisis situations. Yes. And that arose in June 2013. So you say in the statement that your brother's behaviour escalated and that resulted in your parents taking him to hospital because they were concerned that there might be a medical issue underlying his behaviour, is that right? Yes, and back then, that's how we were guided. If you can't cope with my brother's behaviour, you're to take him to hospital, yeah. And so you recall in your statement, and I won't ask you to go into it this afternoon, that that experience of attending hospital was quite a scary experience for your brother, but also for your family, is that right? Absolutely, yeah. And he did spend some time in the hospital, but after he was discharged, a few months later, it was discovered that he had some major issues with his wisdom teeth, is that right? We actually discovered that last year when we removed them. And I asked the dentist, do you think that may have been a contributing factor many years ago? And she said possibly yes. So when you reflect back on the events, I think you thought, well, maybe the pain he experienced because of the problems with his wisdom teeth may have been a trigger for the behaviours in 2013 that then led to the hospital admission. Yes. Now then, as you've mentioned, your dad retired in December 2014 and at that stage, your brother still living at home with your mum and dad. And there were some support services that were coming into your parents' home to assist your parents and also to assist your brother, is that right? Yes, they would take over that for the day. And I think you say quite candidly that in the home, your parents haven't had a lot of support in terms of how to deal with some challenging behaviours that might have arisen in terms of them and your brother. And was this something that you observed might have created some tension and seen your brother's behaviour escalate a little bit in the early part of 2015? Yes, the biggest dilemma I always saw was because of my mum's intellectual disability and my father thinking that if he worked seven days a week, that was his best way of providing. So he wasn't in contact with the therapist at all, was that they were giving strategies, like a visual schedule, that my mother couldn't actually implement. So I would always say, can we drop down the demands for my mother so that we could achieve something that was more tangible that she could follow? So there was definitely therapists that tried to help our family, but I just think me to sort of bringing in those strategies that would have been helpful within the context of how we lived, there were, that was never really achieved. So I think how services managed that was, let's just take him out, let's just take him out. So he never really acquired those skills within the home. And so at that stage, this is sort of in your father's early stage of retirement, that your brother spent some time in respite care, is that right? Since a very young age, actually, yeah. Now, at the end of 2015, there was another incident that required your brother to be taken to the hospital. And your father called an ambulance because he was concerned about how your brother was behaving in the house. So again, hospital was the point of call and your brother spent some point of time in hospital. And this is when you had to become involved in speaking to advocacy services to say, once he's out of hospital, what options are there for accommodation? And so is it fair to say at this stage, you were in a sense trying to both support your own parents, but also your little brother and to try to work out what was going to be appropriate housing and accommodation arrangements for the whole of the family? And that job fell to you, why was that? I actually raised the alarm many years earlier, it would have been earlier in the 2000s. I just noticed that my brother was not able to stay inside the home for long periods of time and since he left school, once he left school and lost that security and stability of school, yeah. So I did ask for a long time, could we find support and accommodation? Because I thought maybe if he's in an environment with people that understand intellectual disability, put in all the routines and they're trained, that, you know, we can give him a really good life. I think back then, I remember people saying to me, you know, support accommodation is really hard to get, you'll wait 10 years, it was just so scarce. And it was up to families back then, pre-NDIS, for us to fight, fight, fight for support accommodation. And your fight, fight, fight involved sending letters, emails, contacting the media and even doing a drive-by of the local politician's office to see if you could get a response, is that right? Yes. And you were able to secure some respite accommodation for your brother and that was the end of 2015. Yes. And he was in respite for about three or four months before he then went in to live at his first group home. Correct. And so he moved into the first group home in early April 2016. And initially, he, what was it, he was in a granny flat, is that right, at the beginning? Yes. And so he was living by himself and your observations in the early part was that that seemed to be working for him, is that right? Absolutely. And the house manager at the time, she was a fabulous communicator, she was very gifted in the intellectual disability space, she really respected him as an individual and I felt so secure in him being, living in that accommodation. And in your statement, you go on to describe what happened in October 2016 where there were some changes at the house. Yes. And that meant that some other people came to live at the group home. And this raised an issue for you about your brother's ability to choose who he would wish to live with and whether or not the other people who came to live with him were the right match for him, is that right? That's correct, yes. And so you noticed yourself, but you also received some reports that there were some issues with his behaviour, but also some concerns about injury and harm to himself, is that right? Yes, all of a sudden, there were scratches that would appear on his arms and even his torso, his back and bruising and they were unexplained. And then there was a move to another home for reasons that we don't need to go into, but the group moved to another home. And was it your expectation that maybe the change might be a change for the better and things would improve? Absolutely. But you observed that it was still a bit of a rocky road, wasn't it, after the group moved into the new home, which was March last year? I was a bit worried because I knew another resident was moving into the granny flat and I knew that meant that there were probably more behaviours of concern presented there. My biggest concern was my brother's very much like a mirror and he mirrors his environment and copies what he sees. And because I wasn't privy to, I guess, the challenging behaviours he would be exposed to, my anxiety was, would he start to mimic that? And then how do we manage that? Okay. Now, can I move up to more recent times? 2020's been a pretty challenging year for everybody and as you're aware, the Royal Commission recently held a public hearing on the impact of COVID-19 on people with disability. And COVID-19's had a real impact on your family and your brother, isn't that right? An enormous impact, yes. And so for him, the changes to his routine in that early part of the pandemic, in late March and into April, the inability to be able to go to the gym, the inability to be able to participate in some of his activities, you thought might have been a reason for seeing some changes in his behaviour. And that caused you concern? And even to the point, and I'm working through your statement a little bit here, you made an application to the New South Wales Civil and Administrative Tribunal to apply for a guardianship order in relation to your brother, is that right? Yes, that's correct. And you made a decision that you thought that the issues and the tension in the house that you observed, that it might be time to look for some alternative accommodation for your brother, is that right? Yes. And so a few weeks ago, he moved into some new accommodation, is that right? That's correct. And what's the nature of his new accommodation? He lives alone with no other person. He's in a flat, a ground, level flat, and he has support workers with him and that's, you know, around the clock. Okay. And he's also had to have some surgery this year, hasn't he? So he's had some surgery in late July? Yes, that's right, yeah. And one of your concerns is that the condition that caused him to have surgery, that might be a factor in terms of some of the behaviours that he's displayed in the early part of 2020, is that right? Yes. Now, at the present time, your, can I put it this way, your fingers are crossed that the new accommodation's going to work out to be better. And what impact has that had on you personally? Because you've really taken up the call to be a very strong advocate for him, particularly this year. So what impact has all of the advocacy and the drive-bys and the emails and the phone calls, what impact has that had on you? Oh, gosh, where do I start? It's significant, I guess. I don't see my husband and my children. You know, when I make a point to make sure I'm there at school pick-up every day, but I don't get to just have downtime with them. It's been a huge financial impact on us, so I haven't been able to work since March. And that's a huge amount of pressure for my husband to carry. It's had a real impact on me. I've had to be so strong for my brother and have really difficult conversations, which I know is going to put people offside. But I have to always weigh up his life, what is best for him and not really care about what other people think about me, but, you know, I'm human too. It strains my relationship with my parents and my siblings. I mean, we've got so much unconditional love and we are such an enmeshed family, but I hate how sometimes I have to be short because we're in a crisis. I hate how I can't have a cup of tea with my mum and just chat or take her to the zoo, which she loves. I hate how my daughters don't get to see my brother and seeing my brother regress and not knowing if he is safe. Sometimes I'm up at night going, I'm trusting these people with him because my trust has been violated. It's a real different reality I live in right now. How does that make you feel? It can make me feel very isolated and lonely and I think that's the devil in all this. And I just reach out and I've got wonderful, wonderful friends, wonderful support network, wonderful therapists around and the support workers around at the moment are just gorgeous. And I just have to make myself reach out because it can feel really, really lonely, yeah. You've wanted to share your experience with the Royal Commission, not because you want to point the finger or to say anybody is to blame, but you wanted to share a little bit of a window into the life of your brother and also the impact on your family. And you've made some suggestions and you've got some ideas in your statement. But you observed that it was still a bit of a rocky road, wasn't it, after the group moved into the new home, which was March last year?
I was a bit worried because I knew another, um, resident was moving into the granny flat. And I knew that meant that there were probably more behaviours of concern presented there. My biggest concern was my brother's very much like a mirror, and he mirrors his environment and copies what he sees. And because I wasn't privy to, uh, I guess, the challenging behaviours he would be exposed to, my anxiety was, would he start to mimic that? And then how do we manage that?
Okay. Now, can I move up to, uh, more recent times? Uh, 2020's been a pretty challenging year for everybody. And as you're aware, the Royal Commission recently held a public hearing on the impact of COVID-19 on people with disability. And COVID-19's had a real impact on your family and your brother, isn't that right?
Enormous impact, yes.
And so for him, uh, the changes to his routine in that early part of the pandemic, in, in late March and into April, the inability to be able to go to the gym, the inability to be able to participate in some of his activities, you thought might have been a reason for seeing some changes in his behaviour. And that, that caused you concern? And even to the point, and I'm working through your statement a little bit here, you made an application to the New South Wales Civil and Administrative Tribunal to apply for a guardianship order in relation to your brother, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And you made a decision that you thought that the, uh, issues and the tension in the house that you observed, that it might be time to look for some alternative accommodation for your brother, is that right? And so a, a few weeks ago, he moved into some new accommodation, is that right?
That's correct.
And what's the nature of his new accommodation?
He lives alone, um, with no other person, um. He's in a, a flat, a ground, um, level flat, uh, and he has, uh, support workers, um, with him, um, and that's, you know, around the clock.
And he's also had to have some surgery this year, hasn't he? So he's had some surgery in late July?
Yes, that's right, yeah.
And one of your concerns is that the condition that caused him to have surgery, that might be a factor in terms of some of the behaviours that he's displayed in the, uh, early part of 2020, is that right?
Uh-uh, yes.
Now, uh, at the present time, you're, can I put it this way, your fingers are crossed that the new accommodation's going to work out to be better. And what, what impact has that had on you personally? Because you've really taken up the call to be a very strong advocate for him, particularly this year. So what impact has all of, uh, the, the advocacy and the drive-bys and the emails and the phone calls, what impact does that have on you?
Oh, gosh, where do I start? It's, uh, significant, I guess, um. I don't see my husband and my children, um. Uh, you know, when I, I make a point to make sure I'm there at school pickup every day, um, but I don't get to just have downtime with them. It's been a huge financial impact on us, so I haven't been able to work since March, um. Uh, and that's a huge amount of pressure for my husband to carry. Um, it's, it's had a real impact on me. Um, I've had to be so strong for my brother and have really difficult conversations, which I know is gonna, um, put people offside, um. But I have to always weigh up his life, um, what is best for him, um, and not really care about what other people think about me, but, you know, I'm human too. Um, it strains my relationship with my parents and my sibling. I mean, we've got so much unconditional love and we are such an enmeshed family. But I hate how sometimes I have to be short because we're in a crisis. I hate how I can't have a cup of tea with my mum and just chat, or take her to the zoo, which she loves. I hate how my daughters don't get to see my brother, um, and seeing my brother regress and not knowing if he is safe. Um, sometimes I'm up at night going, I'm trusting these people with him because my trust has been violated. Um, it's, it's a real different reality I live in, um, right now.
How's that make you, how's that make you feel?
Um, it can make me feel very isolated and lonely, and I think that's the devil in all this. And I just reach out, uh, and I've got wonderful, wonderful friends, wonderful support network, wonderful therapists around, and the support workers around at the moment are just gorgeous. And I just have to make myself reach out because it can feel really, really lonely, yeah.
You've wanted to share your experience with the Royal Commission, not because you want to point the finger or to say anybody is to blame, but you wanted to share a, a little bit of a window into the life of your brother and also the impact on your family. And you've made, uh, some suggestions and you've got some ideas in your statement. So if you've got a copy of your statement, can I ask you to turn to page thirty-two? And paragraph one hundred and thirty-three. And you tell the Royal Commission that you mostly worry that your brother now has a reputation of being a violent individual. And he re, and he reacts to how he's treated. Can I ask, as you've walked with him, and sometimes I think you've, you've gone out on excursions to parks or you're in the community, what is it that's caused you to have this worry about your brother's reputation, but also how other people in the community see him? Can you tell the Royal Commission a little bit about that experience?
I think our society, um, doesn't have much exposure to people like my brother. Uh, I know that's probably sounds so terrible. But, you know, I walk around with my brother and I'm like, where's everyone gone? I don't see many people with severe intellectual disabilities that are non-verbal, that might yell out, you know, hello, that might just walk, you know, um, just a little bit differently, that might not, um, behave uh, so well according to all these, you know, social rules we abide by. Um, and because he's so different, as soon as we walk in, um, I see everyone hold their breath, or, you know, uh, you know, move their children away, or, or look at him. Um, because he, he does yell out, he's so excited to see people, he wants to tell everyone, um, what he loves, because he thinks everyone loves the same thing as him, um. And because he's got this amazing booming voice, because he's this big tall man, uh, I, I, I think everyone thinks he's violent and, and I have to sort of address my own fears and, you know, because people look to me and I have to stay calm and I have to have a smile on my face and my quick sort of explanation, just so we can have a nice social experience outside of the car, outside of the unit, away from the national parks, because he's regressed so much socially. Because especially during COVID, he had to be in the national parks, he had to be in the car for fifteen hours a day.
You're now accessing specialist support coordination, and that's to support your brother, but also to help you be able to make the decisions and to make, um, to make decisions that help your brother exercise his choice and control, is that right?
Yes, and she helps me understand how to navigate NDIS. I have worked in the disability sector for over fifteen years. I have, uh, you know, master's degree, uh, and in that master's degree, I, all my assignments are around disability, and I can't even navigate the NDIS adequately to get my brother the funding he needs. And so she helps me understand what we need, so that maybe one day I don't have to provide direct care. Maybe one day I can spend time with my family and go back to work.
And you want to be able to assist your brother so that he can make some decisions about his life, who he lives with. And you say, he's, he might be better suited to be somebody who lives by himself, is that right?
That's right, but that's.
And, and also, as you say in the statement, he might also be better suited to more individualised outings where he can build up his skills, such as being on a boat and sailing, or returning trolleys to the supermarket, or collecting rubbish on beaches. I'm not, does he agree with that suggestion?
Loves it, but he's in heaven, he loves rubbish bins.
And recycling. And you say your brother has a very strong sense of responsibility and loves nothing more than to help others and return their items to their proper places.
That's him.
And so your wish for him is that if he can build up his own skills, then again, that might help him to, uh, find a, a, a way through for his behaviours. And again, to allow him to have that participation in the community, is that right?
Yeah, and maybe even become a valued member of the community, because he might be cleaning up all the rubbish on the beaches, like, that would just be amazing.
Now, um, I'm almost finished, but I wanted to invite you to read a few paragraphs at the end of your statement. From paragraph one hundred and forty-five, when you're talking about what you're wishing for by way of changes that could be made, but also just a reflection on your brother's life based on your experience. So would you like to read from paragraph one hundred and forty-five onwards?
I wish there was a provider of last resort, because at times, life seems like hell without being able to call ATAC and have quick access to experienced professionals who can guide me through tricky situations. In addition, I would like all professionals and every member of the community to be better educated about invisible disabilities, especially severe intellectual disability. As I support my brother to access his local community, I am struck by the absence of others with similar disability. And I wonder whether and how they are accessing their community, or whether they are just shut away. I worry about how many others are being chemically, physically and mechanically restrained, as well as how many others are regressing in developing their skill sets because of restrictions imposed by COVID-19. It seems to me that active participation by people like my brother in their own lives and personal care is no longer really happening. My brother used to be able to do things like make himself a sandwich and chocolate milk. Now we are having to start again from square one, to teach him how to eat at a table without throwing his food to the floor, and how to sit on a couch calmly. He struggles to walk in his community without yelling out and touching others because he has been in a car or in national parks for five months. The high number of support workers that have been around my brother also means he has no strength in the world whatsoever. He has regressed significantly. I know my brother can have a good life, I just know it. When he feels safe and supported, he loves to be busy and he loves to help. He has a sweet innocence about him and is extremely lovable. My brother's life and my family's lives are now significantly dependent on the goodwill of others. I believe we can all have a better life. I don't think things need to be like they are now. I hope that this Royal Commission can help to bring change.
Um, ABF, thank you very much for providing the Royal Commission with your statements. And we've only touched upon some aspects of the statement, but your statement will be available as part of the Royal Commission's evidence. But thank you very much for your time this afternoon and sharing your experiences with the Royal Commission.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner McEwen has a question.
Uh, tha- tha- thank you. Could I just clarify something that you said? You said that your brother spent fifteen hours, and I apologise if I've misunderstood, fifteen hours a day in a car, is that currently present? Or does he need someone to be with him in the car or someone driving him around? Could you just clarify that? Thank you.
So, uh, around April, May, uh, when the COVID restrictions were first imposed and all his routine ceased, he did not respond well, and he could not be in his home. We later found out that something happened in his home. Uh, so he was in the car for up to fifteen hours, um. And the idea was to put him in and out of the car, but back then, there were so many people in the national park, it was just so hard to find a space where he could go out. That's not the case anymore.
Thank you, that, that helps clarify, thank you.
Commissioner, continue.
No, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry I have to refer to you as ABF, but thank you, ABF, for giving your evidence and thank you for, uh, explaining the history with your brother. Um, we appreciate your having given evidence and, uh, your, uh, account of, uh, what you have experienced. Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. That concludes the evidence for today. So if it's convenient to adjourn now and resume at nine thirty tomorrow morning.
Nine thirty, very well, we shall resume at nine thirty.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.